I would like to call to order the meeting of the Hingham Board of Selectmen for June 9, 2020. And I'll move to our first item of business. Oh, first of all, you think I get used to this. I need to read the following. This meeting is being held remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to an order issued by the Governor of Massachusetts dated March 12, 2020, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting are being recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the Chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Massachusetts General Law Chapter 30A, Section 20F, so that the Chair may inform all other participants of said recording. So if you could use maybe the raised hand feature and let me know if you intend to record the proceeding this evening, that would be great. Looking at my list of participants and I don't see anybody. Okay, so I will proceed under the assumption that the meeting is not being recorded by anybody but the Town of Hingham. Let me just take you through the agenda quickly tonight and go over the protocols. I see a few new names on the list. I just want to make sure we're all on the same page. So we have some housekeeping business like approval of the minutes. Tonight, we're going to take up the rules and regs for the Weir River Water System. We're going to consider a request from Scarlet Oak Tavern for a drive-in movie night. We are going to consider the Hingham Outdoor Table Service Policy pursuant to the Governor's reopening plans. We'll have a COVID update. We'll have public comment, perhaps appointments, and then reports by the Board and the Town Administrator and Assistant Town Administrator. We also have a couple of votes on the agenda tonight for a one-year concession agreement with certain of our youth sports teams for the use of the concession stand at Lynch Field and a consideration of an appointment of a Director of Assessing for the town. So our practice has been that the Board will entertain the item on the agenda, will ask questions and make comments, and then I will open it up to people from the public, members in the public who would like to make a comment or ask a question. And again, if you could use your raised hand feature, that would be the easiest thing to do. Michelle needs to unmute you, so I think the raised hand feature again will just help us progress if in fact you'd like to comment. I bring this up because if you do have comments, we do want you to participate. I just want you to understand how that's going to work. So I'd like to move now to the approval of the minutes. We have two sets of minutes on the agenda this evening. Any further questions or comments from either of my colleagues?
I'm fine with the minutes of May 22nd and June 2nd.
I've not, I just am looking at my email and I understand some changes came through on June 2nd within the last hour. I've not been able to review those.
Okay, are you ready to vote on the 22nd, Mary?
Yep.
Okay. Let's hold the second then. And if, Joe, maybe if you'd like to make a motion for the May 22nd minutes?
Yes, I move to approve the minutes dated May 22nd, 2020.
Second.
All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Karen? Aye. Okay, so we will hold the June 2nd minutes until another meeting. Next up is a consideration, review, and vote of the rules and regulations for the Weir River Water System. It's really an incredible document. I think it speaks to the great work of both Environmental Partners Group. I think Ryan Trahan is on the line. I don't know if anybody else from Environmental Partners has joined us this evening, as well as the Volunteer Governance and Evaluation Committee chaired by Jim Taylor. This is very detailed work to be sure that the rules and regulations that Aquarian had in place with respect to all of the ratepayers, all of the customers that purchased water from Aquarian, to make sure that those rules transition to the municipality and to add rules and modify rules as appropriate now that the Town of Hingham will be operating the water company through a private operator. I know I do have some questions. I'm wondering if it might be helpful to have Ryan or if there's a member of the TNE Committee that could make comments but could perhaps give us an overview of the rules and regulations?
Sure, Karen. This is Ryan Train, Environmental Partners. I think I echo your sentiment as well. My thanks goes out to the Transition Evaluation Committee. It was a great process we had with them reviewing this document. And just to let everybody know, we discussed the rules and regulations with them on five separate meetings back last October and November and December, and then recently in May, and really had some really good work sessions with the public, most notably on December 9th and May 4th. The rules and regulations of the Weir River Water System mostly help govern the day-to-day business of the water system, and it's a great reference guide for your existing and new water customers. It gives them the ability to help apply for water service. It helps them discontinue water use for seasonal purposes or permanent reasons. It helps distinguish between where the system ownership from the Weir River Water System versus where homeowners or private water service line meets. It also reviews and discusses bills and invoices and the abatement process if someone ever disputes their bill. It also goes into detail about the type of water use restrictions that may be in place for outside water use that the customers may have to follow. It also goes through the water balance program, which helps encourage and offsets any water use for new customers or any properties that are being redeveloped for any use over 100,000 gallons a year or more. So that really helps with water conservation for the long term. There's also policies in here about public and private fire hydrants. And then also, lastly, it lists the procedure on how the town would set the rates for the water system. And also, at the end, in the appendices, it has the list of the current rates and fees that you charge. It also has a list of sample material specifications and also the actual water balance application. So it's, as you mentioned, a pretty thorough document, but it's mostly used as a reference point for the average daily customer as well as the operator and the water superintendent going forward. And one thing that we tried to accomplish when we set forth on this was to make the existing rules and regulations that Aquarian has and that everyone in town is used to, make them a little more user-friendly, but not completely reinvent the wheel. And hopefully, we accomplished that.
Yep, I would agree. Anything further? Anybody from the TNE Committee on the line this evening? Not seeing anybody. Joe, do you have questions for Ryan?
I do, but like you, I wanted to thank Ryan and really thank the Transition Evaluation Committee led by Jim Taylor. It's just been an incredible job. I've reviewed the rules and regulations. I know we all have. We've had the opportunity to submit comments, and I appreciate all the work that's gone into it. I had two sections that perhaps Ryan, you can help me on. One is Section 10, and the other is Section 24. Section 10 dealing with plumbing, which may be a mundane issue. And my question is, let me just get to that section. To what extent, when there's plumbing work, to what extent does the water system need to exercise an approval process?
I believe it's only in conjunction with changing out the meter or a new service. I think if someone's obviously redoing some internal plumbing, the water system may not need to know about that. It's mostly related to anything that would impact the water service outside of the street if they're replacing the private line or if they're replacing, if they need help replacing the water meter.
And is that consistent with the way it was with Aquarian?
Yes, not, I'd have to look back to the original document, but in this section, I don't believe much had changed. The one thing we wanted to make sure was clear is that if plumbing work is being performed in Hall, then that plumbing inspector, Hall's plumbing inspector would have jurisdiction. If work was being performed in Hingham, then Hingham's plumbing inspector would have jurisdiction over that service. So we wanted to try to have that section, make sure the customers understood that you may need a plumbing inspection and permit, and that they would have to go to that individual town.
Yep.
In addition to the Weir River Water System operations to apply for the service.
What caught my attention is that, at least in the red line version, it shows that there had been a requirement for approval by the water system, and that requirement was deleted.
I think what we tried to do there was just eliminate a little confusion about what type of work, that the water system may not have jurisdiction over all of the plumbing work.
Exactly.
And that's what we tried to reduce by removing that red line.
Okay. And then my second area I want to talk, have you talk a little bit about is Section 24, which is the water conservation restrictions.
You want me to talk about it in detail?
If you could just give a general summary so that I and perhaps others on the call understand what process is going to be followed, when water conservation restrictions are going to be imposed, how that's going to work.
Sure. So as of right now, water restrictions are set to be in place between April 15th and October 15th each year. That tends to be the time of the highest outside water use. So when these restrictions are in place, it helps curtail excessive use during different times of the week to help the water system sort of catch up with pumping and limit the amount of use, and tries to hold it within a certain time of day. So you can see here, there's dates and also times, as far as when irrigation systems should be set to operate. And it also gives a signed day for an odd address or an even address.
Yeah.
For when this is supposed to be and follow the watering. So those are the annual restrictions that are in place each year. And there's also, if it does head into a drought, which happened in 2016, it allows the water commissioners to move into a higher level type of outside water use, different levels, just in case there is any impact from the drought and on the existing water supply.
Okay, that's really, that's the summary I was looking for. And before I yield the floor, I just neglected to thank our selectmen liaison to transition, Mary Power, who I know has put in an incredible amount of time and effort to bring this to fruition. So thank you, Mary.
Great, thanks, Joe. Nothing further at this time?
Nope.
Mary, questions for Ryan?
No, Joe, thank you. I just wanted to add to, with respect to the water conservation restrictions, I think one of the things that the TNE Committee discussed quite a bit was the potential that as the town gains experience operating the water system, this may be one area that we might want to modify. And what I would just note is, with respect to this regulation or any others in this document, we will do that in a very public process where all of this will be discussed in public, votes will be taken in public. So I think that's an important thing for people to remember. One of the things that Ryan mentioned to us in the development of these regulations is that based on his experience in communities, most recently Eastham, it's not uncommon for these rules and regulations to be modified in the first few years. So we would expect as we gain experience with the water system to look at these rules and regs, potentially make some adjustments, again, in a public process, which I think is of great benefit to all of the ratepayers because we've never had that opportunity before.
Anything further, Mary?
No.
Yeah, I would echo that. I think it was one of the things that we talked about again and again when we conducted the multiple public sessions that we had with respect to the governance issues surrounding the water company. And municipal ownership requires that all of these conversations take place in public. So I completely agree, and I think that's one of the pluses of municipal ownership of this utility. What was I going to say? So I had a couple of questions as well. I've looked at, oh, I guess the only point I wanted to make about water conservation and the drought restrictions was that my reading of it was they pretty closely follow Aquarian's protocols. And again, would echo what Mary said, which is, I think that's a great starting point, but as we improve the system and as we gain more experience in the day-to-day operations of the system, it strikes me that is one area that we would want to evaluate because I think it's an area that really affects people's lives and people's property during the summer months. My questions, one was just sort of an administrative comment. In Section 3, we talk about the makeup of the cab in the rules and regulations, and I'm just wondering, I'm sort of wondering whether we want to make a more general reference to the cab or we want to anticipate that the cab may be amended by town meeting. I don't know if you're aware, Ryan, but there is a warrant article being proposed that would add an additional member from Hall. So I'm just sort of throwing it out there to say, I don't know what sort of flexibility we would have to amend the rules to accurately reflect the membership of the cab after town meeting, which is scheduled for June 20th, or whether we want to anticipate that amendment. I don't know. But it's likely that that membership will change in a couple of weeks. The definition for commercial usage, so maybe this is buried somewhere in the rules that I didn't find, but what about buildings that have some commercial or retail use and also residential use? Are there two different customers in that property, or how does that work?
It can be taken case by case, depending upon if the building is serviced by two different services or two different meters, because then the actual meter connection itself would be the one, what would be considered or classified as commercial versus residential. A lot of these, use of these terms refer back to how DEP classifies water use when we have to do reporting back to DEP. So they do have a commercial category and residential category, so that's sort of why we break it up.
Okay. And I'm assuming those categories are existing with Aquarian. We would carry over those categories to our recognition of the water customer.
Yes.
And then I had a question on Sections 24 and 25. Let me just get there. So in both 24 and 25, it talks about the Weir River Water System may implement one of two water restriction programs at any time. So are you, I guess I would imagine, right, that the water superintendent, together with the water operator, determine that water restrictions should be put in place, and that's something that might be for the Board as water commissioners? Or I guess I'm just unclear on what the process is for the implementation, both of water conservation restrictions as well as the drought restrictions?
In my experience, most times going into a water use conservation restrictions have to be voted on by water commissioners. There is a permit or a notification that has to be submitted to Mass DEP that outlines, and they do track which communities are in outside water use restrictions or not, mostly because a lot of these actually tie back to, water suppliers have a water management permit, which may or may not require this. And so you may be required by DEP to be doing these restrictions. You may not have no choice. But you may, and a lot of the drought restrictions actually tie into a state, I think there's a drought task force that issues out as the summer months progress, the level of drought and lack of water in the state, so that they keep the water suppliers sort of up to speed through different associations and through the state guidance on that. And then I assume that that would go back to the water commissioners when, after the water superintendent is sort of paying attention to any drought status notifications, and they would elevate that to water commissioners for a vote to enter into those more restrictive restrictions.
Okay, so I guess we're happy with just indicating the system will implement, and then we sort of know intuitively how that process would roll out?
Yes.
Okay. Questions from the public with respect to the rules and regulations for the Weir River Water System? Any further questions or comments from my colleagues?
Yes, Karen, so in light of your comment with respect to Section 3.
Yeah.
Which I think was very timely, I would suggest that the language of the first sentence of the first paragraph that we add on after Cohasset 1, the following phrase, "or such other composition as may be approved by town meeting from time to time."
Like that.
So the first sentence in its entirety would read, "The Citizens Advisory Board, referred to as CAB, established pursuant to Article 11 of the 2019 Annual Town Meeting, consists of five residents of Hingham, five residents from Hingham 3, Hall 1, and Cohasset 1," adding now, comma, "or such other composition as may be approved by town meeting from time to time."
I got it.
Okay. I think that covers it nicely, Joe. Ryan, I'm assuming you don't have an issue with that?
No, not that I see, no.
Each row is in a point of frame. Yeah, I don't think it changes anything else. So if it's okay with you, Mary, I think we would move the rules and regulations as amended.
Yep.
Would someone like to make that motion?
Before we make the motion, I just want to confirm that we have noticed this meeting as a meeting of the Board of Water Commissioners with appropriate notice given on the website so that all the towns have been notified?
Yes.
Thank you. Then I would move that the Board of Selectmen, acting as the Board of Water Commissioners pursuant to Article 11 of the 2019 Town of Hingham Annual Town Meeting and Chapter 139 of the Acts of 1879, as amended, and all other applicable laws, do hereby vote to adopt the attached rules and regulations for the Weir River Water System as amended.
Second.
All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Karen? Aye. Great, great job. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Karen, if I may, just before Ryan steps off the line, I think the town was really very fortunate when Environmental Partners Group submitted a response to our request for some transition assistance. And the quality of Ryan's work along with his colleague Mark White and other members of the EPG team, it has just been exceptional. And I think we all have seen that the past year's transition has been complex, it's been difficult, and there's no way we would have gotten this done without the partnership that we have with EPG. I'm also grateful that every Monday, Ryan is on the Capitol Call with Aquarian. And during this good husbandry period, as we work with Aquarian to understand capital requirements, Ryan and EPG's support in that area has been very helpful too. So I just wanted to take this opportunity to publicly acknowledge and thank Ryan and the rest of the EPG team.
No, thank you, Mary. That's very flattering, and I appreciate it. You guys have been one of the best teams to work with, so it's been certainly a pleasure.
Well, we couldn't have done it without you and certainly not as efficiently and comprehensively. And again, I just think that your contributions here add to the credibility of the town in taking on this operation. We took every step of this very seriously. And to Mary's point, I thought you in particular worked very well with the TNE group, because that group also was an element of, I think, town meeting's expectation that volunteers and the public would be fully informed about this transition process. And I realize that that adds another layer and more time to this process, but it was very important to town meeting and to the town itself, so thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next up is a request from the Scarlet Oak Tavern for a drive-in movie night.
For me to tee that up, Karen, I could.
Yeah.
So we have a number of staff on the phone tonight. Susan Murphy will be there to walk us through some of the regulation. We also have members of the staff reopening team that have been working diligently to try to provide for a safe and appropriate reopening of our restaurants using all of the tools made available to us from the state. To that end, I think the coordinator we've used for this effort, for tonight anyways, for tonight's discussion anyway, is Emily Wentworth. She's on the phone. Maybe she can introduce the other team members, the roles, and then head into Susan's explanation of the request.
Yeah, that'd be great, thank you. Happy to. Hi, Emily Wentworth, Senior Planner in the Land Use and Development Department. As Tom mentioned, there's a working group that is trying to figure out how to locally implement some of the guidance we received from the state recently on reopening. The specific standard here, it's called the Workplace Standards for Drive-In Movie Theaters that was issued by the state on May 18th. And following that, the Scarlet Oak Tavern filed an entertainment license application to conduct a series of drive-in movie events on Tuesday evenings in the month of June. That request was circulated by your department to representatives of the Health Department, Susan Sarni in particular, the Building Department, Michael Clancy, the Fire Department, Lieutenant DiNapoli, the Police Department, Sergeant Kilroy, and Sharon Profetti from your office, and myself. So we've gone through a few iterations and received some new information from the applicant, who I understand is also on the line, and maybe he could give a little summary of where the plan is at this point. But the way I understand it, they hope to, again, on Tuesday nights between the hours of, well, 8:00 and 11:00 on the outer ends, sell tickets to an event for up to 33 vehicles to park in their rear parking area and view a movie in connection with their ongoing takeout program and then what we hope will soon be their outdoor patio table service. So we've developed a series of conditions that you may choose to consider if you opt to approve the entertainment license. But in general, the group supports the application and feels that it can be conducted in a safe manner and would provide a nice service for the community and help the restaurant to get back into business.
Hi, my name's Kenny. I'm the General Manager of Scarlet Oak Tavern. It's really been a pleasure working with Emily as well as Sharon, getting information back from Michael and Susan and all of the others involved. That's just it. That's exactly what we're trying to accomplish. We just want one night during this crazy time to have a small amount of people come down to the restaurant safely and be able to watch a movie. There are some other restaurants out there that have tried to pivot this way, and we're not doing it. We're just doing it to make a memory and to keep Scarlet Oak in the local community and to try to be a restaurant that really wants to be out there for the guests and for the local community. I think, looking at what we've been trying to accomplish in terms of our reopening and the standards for social distancing and listening to Emily and them and doing the concessions the right way, we've put those practices in place in the diagram and in what we're going to be doing for reopening. And we do have very, the whole company, and we have restaurants on the North Shore as well, we have strict guidelines in place to make sure that we are following the safety guidelines of the CDC and the state and all the information that we've been given. So back to the movie aspect of it. we're obviously not operating at full capacity, and we have quite a bit of parking, and we have the opportunity to put on a movie night at the beginning of the week on Tuesday nights for hopefully the summer and to show it to 33 cars that want to come down and watch a movie.
Great, thanks, Kenny. I wondered if Chief Olson might comment at this point?
Yes, hi, this is Chief Olson. We did have a chance to review the plans that were over, presented at the 5 o'clock administration meetings. And I think they've done a great job setting this up. One of the things I originally asked for was to have actual measurements on the plans, since that is missing. The plan that they present, I think, is a valid plan, but it may be slightly altered because when we go down there, as in a lot of construction and laying out of parking lots and stuff, we realized that we don't actually have the width or the length that we expected so that it can meet the proper travel distances. So it's going to be around the 30-car limit, but I would not say it might not be. One of our main concerns is to provide access, entrance, if someone had to leave during the middle of an event, they, without moving cars, they have to be able to do that. So there might be a little bit less, and I don't want to say we're stuck on the exact plan there because the lot may not accommodate it as fully as we believe, so I think.
Sorry, Chief, so maybe we would modify 3 and 4 to have some language that would include, you know, say up to 32 vehicles, but, you know, but up to a maximum determined by the Police Department and, you know, I don't know whether Lieutenant DiNapoli would weigh in on that as well, but, sorry, I interrupted you. So it may be that we want to modify certain of these conditions to give you the discretion to make a final determination about that particular condition, right?
Yes, that's the only issue we have. And I think if this is in keeping with all entertainment licenses, I believe we always have the right to reconsider anything if it doesn't work out, if that's in keeping with the other entertainment licenses we issue.
Right, okay. I'm sorry, anything else?
No, I'm fine, but I think you probably should also, I know Sergeant Jeff Kilroy and Lieutenant DiNapoli also worked on stuff. They might want to tell you about the workings of the videos and other movies and the sound systems would be of interest, I think.
Okay, how about if we go to Sergeant Kilroy next?
Yes, yes, ma'am, thank you. As outlined in the plan, I also spoke with Lieutenant DiNapoli. Chief brings up a good point about alterations as needed. We would be there to ensure that everything was safe and vehicle access would be unimpeded in the event of an emergency. We would also outline an evacuation plan as needed, and this would all be ironed out prior to. But the overall look of it, we do agree amongst the committee and also with what the chief is saying as well. I know Lieutenant DiNapoli also, and I spoke prior to the meeting and filled the group in, and I'm sure he'll continue on with what I'm saying here. If LT, you want to add to some of this, sir?
Sure. Lieutenant DiNapoli from Hingham Fire. So basically Sergeant Kilroy and I have discussed it. We've looked at the possibility of how, you know, just making sure we have enough space that if a car did have to get out, as far as access for emergency vehicles and things of that nature, I'm not overly concerned about it. I think we can do it. I think we'll have the room that we need to, you know, in the event that there was an emergency there. One of the concerns was that the screen itself, where it was placed, it can't be in view of a roadway. I think they've kind of taken care of that in the placement behind the actual building itself, and then they have the shed and the buffer for Whiting Street. Obviously, the entire restaurant will buffer from Main Street. As Sergeant stated, he and I will actually be on location the first night that this is granted and allowed to look at how it's set up, look at what's going on. And, you know, basically, if it's on the fly and we have to make an adjustment, we have to say, hey, this works, that doesn't work, or this is good, that's not. Whatever needs to be done, we'll be there to adjust it, and then going forward, they can use whatever adjustments we had to make that night. I'm sure with anything that's going on in the last few months, it's going to be some trial and error. But the plan seems pretty decent, seems viable. And obviously, you know, to bring business back to the town, that's our concern, and I think it can be done, it can be done safely and done right.
Great. Well, I appreciate all that cooperation. Are there any other staff members that would like to offer any comments? Anybody from the reopening committee that would like to be heard on this?
This is Susan from Border Health.
Hi, Susan.
Hi. I reviewed the plans. They're going to operate as a takeout food establishment, so they're not going to be delivering food to cars. I just want to be consistent around the town of Hingham. This is allowed in Phase 2. There'll be a table that they can pick up their food and then bring it to their own cars. I've also reviewed the flow of traffic for people using the restrooms inside the food establishment. So we have a consistent flow that we're not, we're maintaining social distancing. And everyone is to wear masks, that attends and all staff is to wear masks, which is consistent with DPH rules. And we'll be implementing that if there's any other request in this kind of operation in Hingham.
Great, thank you. That's an important clarification. Joe Fisher, any questions or comments with respect to the drive-in movie night entertainment license request?
Yes, what's going to be the first movie? I'm not sure it's been planned yet, but I do have some more serious questions. Have the abutters been notified about what's being proposed, and do we have comments from them?
Susan or Emily, you want to take that?
Well, I don't know, Ken, does the owner want to speak to it? The restaurant operator want to speak to it?
He might be muted.
Yeah, yes.
I'm sorry, Susan, say that again?
Kenny, you there?
I'm here, yes.
I had asked whether or not abutters to the property had been notified about your plans and whether or not we have any comments from them?
I reached out to Joe DePisquali from AW Perry, and they don't have any problem with it.
Is that the only abutter?
Oh, I, in terms of, you mean our neighbors? No, I have not reached out to them. I'm sorry.
I just, I feel like there's no noise. There may be some light spill from the screen. Right, but you could fill that parking lot with cars, and you have, when your restaurant's been open. I'm just trying to figure out. I agree with you, Joe. I always like the neighbors to be aware of what's going on around them. I'm just wondering in this context.
They're closed at that time. All the businesses are closed.
Well, but if I look around, if I kind of, if I draw a radius around you, there's that condo development that's not too far away, right? So you've got the stores and stuff, you get that gas station. But then if you back up going, I guess, north on Main Street, you've got that condo development, like how, you know.
So the screen, the screen goes in the other direction of 228, so it goes towards the gas station into the woods. So there's no, there's no business that's going to, that's going to take on that light or anything like that, so.
Yep. So you don't, you don't.
And it worked out great because it's the closest to the electricity, too. So it worked out in two different ways, right?
Yep. So are there no residential communities that are likely to be affected by the light on the screen?
I do not think there is. I'm very, all of the leaves have grown in. There's the condo community on the other side, you can't see any longer through those leaves, so I don't think so, no.
Yep, okay. Will restroom facilities be available for folks who go to the drive-in?
Yes, they will. And it will be taped off when you walk up to the restaurant and enter into the patio area. You enter in from one part of the restaurant and exit another part of the restaurant, and there, it's all taped off once you go in. And then once you get closer to the bathroom, there's the six feet of distancing that you see. It's kind of the guideline until you get to the bathroom, if there was ever more traffic than needed to be.
Yep. I mean, I, overall, I think this is a great idea. It's something that I have not seen in Hingham before. But I think it's absolutely a fantastic opportunity for the community as well as the restaurant. In light of the novelty and sort of the way this is proceeding, what I would recommend is that there be some sort of report back to the Selectmen after a month so that, to the extent that there are issues that we haven't anticipated, there's a forum where they can be heard, and then if we need to make adjustments in a public setting, we can do that. But other than sort of a review after a month, I think this is, everything else looks really good.
So I guess one question, Joe, to maybe follow up on that at this point, is the end date is open-ended because I think when Ken started this process, he was looking at the month of June. And so now he would be down to, if we were to approve this tonight, he'd have three, three Tuesday nights in June. My understanding is his hope would be that he could extend this through the summer. I was sort of, I was on your same page, thinking a month sounded good to me to have, you know, enough experience with this to decide whether we need to make any formal changes with the entertainment license. My question, I guess, is, do we just put a reporting requirement in here or do we limit the license to the Tuesdays through, say, July 7th, which would give in four Tuesdays? And, you know, in advance of July 7th, we would, you know, expect a report to be able to renew that license through the end of the summer. So maybe we just think about that, continue the discussion, and kind of come back to what we want to put as an end date because that's right now open in the vote.
Okay.
But I would agree with you, I think, you know, and I don't think anything's necessarily bad, but as Lieutenant DiNapoli said, I think we'll learn from this, and we may want to make some tweaks to it. One of the questions is whether those modifications need to be formally memorialized in the entertainment license itself. Anything further at this point, Joe?
Nope.
Okay. Mary, questions with respect to the drive-in license?
Yeah, I had some questions earlier today, and I appreciate Susan Murphy answering those. I, like both of you, you know, I was trying to think about the date and what makes the most sense, listening to the chief as well with respect to the number of vehicles. One of the things I want to balance here is, I've sort of heard, I don't know if it was through Tom or through Michelle, but, you know, I think this is a very popular idea. And with, you know, even with a maximum of 32 cars, I could see the Scarlet Oaks selling a lot of tickets for this, and I could see it being pretty popular. So as we're thinking about our vote tonight, and we're thinking about how long to extend this and, you know, things like maximum number of vehicles, I would just ask that we keep in mind the applicant's ability to, you know, sell tickets and to plan this out. I just don't want him to be in a situation where, you know, he sells tickets and then we say, gee, we're going to need, you know, not as many vehicles. And I appreciate the really collaborative way this is working. But again, just as we're thinking about this vote, and you know, Joe, this is your world more than mine. I just want to strike a balance that's workable for the applicant because, like you and Karen, I think this is a good idea.
Yeah, I'm completely on board. I was thinking, and again, we can get into the weeds on this, maybe as we move forward, but maybe something in the main section of the vote that talks about the application as modified by the Hingham Police Department and the Hingham Fire Department with a communication to the Board of Selectmen on changes in the entertainment license conditions. But then, you know, in addition, maybe, you know, some formal reporting in a month. And then I would suggest a couple of changes in the conditions to, again, allow the police and fire departments, the kind of experts at this, to advise us on changes and to be able to cooperatively come to agreement with the applicant without having to necessarily come back before us, you know, if it doesn't really need our attention, do you know what I mean? Do you have any more questions, Mary?
No.
So I had two quick questions. So the audio is going to come through the car audio system, right? Are you envisioning that people's windows are going to be open? And if they're not going to be open, are you envisioning that people will, from time to time, idle their cars? I'm just worried about, people are, it's going to be hot, right? And I think people are going to have their windows open. So I'm just, while their noise isn't being amplified, I'm just wondering what you're envisioning there.
So I've never done this before, and I think that the, you know, once the guest feels like they're in stereo, they're going to roll up their window and turn on their AC. But I think they will have to remain in their cars and, you know, like any, you know, I don't think there's an alternative. I think they have to hear it from in their cars, and I don't think that, you know, I think the best, I think the best thing to do is to roll up your window while your car is still going on.
Yeah, so I guess I am concerned that we're going to have idling vehicles, which I don't think is a great, it's just not great. And maybe it's just people cool off their cars and shut their cars off, and I don't know. Maybe this is something we just keep an eye on, but I'm concerned about that.
I'm sorry to interrupt. This is Susan Murphy, whenever you have a second.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead, Susan.
Okay. I do think that's going to need to be looked at next Tuesday night because there is a state law that prohibits idling of cars beyond a certain period of time. So I think it's going to have to get figured out between, you know, somehow, sometimes you can turn your key the opposite direction, and you can get your radio to play, or maybe your air to blow, or whatever, without your car being fully on. I'm not a mechanic, so I don't know exactly what that's called when you turn it.
Yeah, yeah. I think you're right.
I don't know if that will work, but I think that there is certain environmental laws of the state that would not allow 30 cars to be sitting there idling for an hour and a half or two-hour movie.
Right. But, and I guess I worry, like, if you are going to to use the battery power to operate your air conditioner and your radio, you know, how long you're likely to be able to do that. So, you know, again, none of us have done this before. I think it's an issue we've had. You know, you're hearing Susan indicate that there are Massachusetts laws that would prohibit the idling of these cars for, you know, more than some modest period of time. So I think we're just going to, we're going to have to watch that, right?
They may need to just roll down their windows and, you know, have their own individual car sounds at just what's necessary for their car so that hopefully it's not spilling into every, I mean, this guy's, Mr. Robichaud, can you speak too, because you had mentioned in discussions with staff that you had marked out spots or circles or something on the ground and how far the cars are apart, are going to be apart. So maybe they may be able to roll down their windows and not be spilling their, you know, the sound spilling too far based on the distancing of the cars?
Right. So to keep, to keep safe distancing, it's every other car length. So we can fit 74 cars, we can fit 74 cars back there, but if it's every other car length, they're more than six feet away at that point. Not much more, but they're more than six feet away. And there's six cars or five cars in each lane, so they're pretty, they're pretty far away. So they could, I'm assuming it not being a regular drive-in movie theater, that they would have a lot of space to be able to roll down their window, and it wouldn't be enough, you know, an affect for another car next to them.
Okay. Let's maybe put a pin in that, but I think we may want to add something to the list of conditions on, you know, conditioning the license on compliance with state laws regarding idling, I guess. idling, I guess. For for lack of a more legally sounding term, but let's put a pin in that for a second. And then the the other question I have is just leaving the venue and and maybe Lieutenant Denapoli or Sergeant Kilroy could speak to this. Are you going to dismiss people by row? Like, is it going to be, you know, kind of mass exodus coming out of there and on to 228 and 53? Or how how do you envision that working? You know, your your restaurant's busy and and there's there's a lot of people coming and going. But this will be everybody all at once.
Right, so I think that there's the way that it's situated right now. We would have to help them and guide the traffic out. But I think that this the cars are spaced far enough apart where there'll be one exit strategy to go out one way and go out of the go out of the exit, I think.
Okay, I see.
There's not, there's not, there's not a lot of, there's really a lot of room. There's quite a bit of room considering.
Okay, Lieutenant Denapoli?
Yep, so Sergeant Kilroy and I actually discussed that. They're going to have a detail officer up there each night. So they'll be able to assist with emptying the parking lot and moving everybody along. Just two other points that I wanted to bring up, if I might. One of the things I think the board should possibly consider as a stipulation or such is that once the restaurants are allowed to reopen for inside seating, we need to assess how this is going to affect the parking situation up there overall, you know. If the restaurant goes back to partial occupancy, it might not be that big of a deal. But if it's allowed to open fully, obviously now we're going to get into, I feel like, a parking nightmare and a lot more vehicles there, so we may have to reassess the movie night.
Yeah, that's a really good point.
And then the other thing I wanted to bring up, just as a suggestion to Kenny as the manager, is perhaps invest in a battery pack. So if you end up with somebody dead there, you can kind of jump them rather than waiting for AAA to get down there and five or six cars, just a suggestion.
That's a good suggestion.
That's a good suggestion. Susan Sarny?
So phase 2.5 or two step stage, whatever it's called, is going to allow indoor seating. So I just am worried that we're going to put an end date on this and then we're going to have an issue with parking. The next step is indoor seating and it's not a capacity, like a 40% capacity number. It's going to be six feet table to table. So I think we need a number on the number of cars that could possibly occupy the inside seating and then equate it to what we're allowing and taking over the parking for the movie night before we approve it for the end of August or put that as a condition, just like Lieutenant Denapoli suggested.
Yep, that's a good point. So I'm sorry, when would when would you anticipate the six foot distancing for indoor seating in August, you think?
No, it could be in stage two. I think it's called step two. So it could be within two weeks of today.
Okay.
They have a lot of parking out there. I just don't know the numbers off the top of my head. It could work, but we might have to limit it to less than 33 cars due to the overlap of inside seating and outdoor.
Yep. I I mean, to me, that's a well, I mean, that's a bigger discussion. Because I I do think you're right that and and maybe it's possible to build in some language here that suggests that, again, Hingham Police and Hingham Fire, as the COVID restrictions or the reopening plans for the state evolve, that the entertainment license would be reviewed, you know, sounds like it could be almost weekly or biweekly. And I I share Mary's concern, like, okay, I'm trying to do this. I'm trying to create some regularity in the offering. But the problem is the ground's moving underneath us and we've got to be able to respond to, you know, the changing conditions, particularly with respect to, you know, parking and capacity.
So can I say one thing?
Yeah, absolutely.
That's one of one of the reasons why we're only offering it on Tuesday night.
Yeah, yeah.
So kids are out of kids are out of school, older kids are are out of school. Like, it's just a Tuesday night that we wanted to offer to to the town. It's not on the weekends and it's certainly something that we thought about the owners and myself, so.
So in terms of capacity, you've already chosen a night that you're you probably have excess indoor capacity in any event, right?
Right, right, right. It's it's not.
Okay, we got a few hands up. Susan Murphy?
Yes, thank you. There there is in some of the analysis that I think got sent over to the board, a breakdown on the number of parking spaces. I actually think I I see Emily's hand up. So I think Emily can speak to this because that there's a zoning formula for how many parking spaces you need based on seats in a restaurant. And given the code, so I I would suggest that, you know, that if we look at the zoning or the the parking needs, the parking is driven by the zoning requirements. And Emily can probably speak to at what point it might start hitting the pressure point from a compliance standpoint.
And it might be, Susan, though, right, that like on a Tuesday night, if they want to keep this going in this at this number, then they limit their capacity on Tuesday night.
Right.
To to balance this out.
Right, so for example, in the in the notes that you have for the meeting for the outdoor seating, which they're already authorized to start doing using the COVID separation of tables, everything, all of that. If you look at the size of that striped parking lot, you know, the outdoor seating is going to be, I don't know, Emily, I'll let you speak to it. It's like 16.
And actually, I I'm sorry, I will speak to it, but Ken, you should correct me if I'm getting the numbers wrong. We did have some discussion about this. And if from my recall, the the number of outdoor seats that you would be permitted to have in compliance with the COVID social distancing requirements would only trigger a demand of 16 parking spaces. The zoning bylaw requires one parking space for every three seats. That's inclusive of customers and employees. And so, you know, that main paved parking area from my recall has somewhere around 74, 75 parking spaces. Only 16 of those would be used for patio seating. The bars will not be able to open until phase four. And given the social distancing that would be required when the interior of the restaurant eventually opens, it seems like there should be adequate parking. We nonetheless share your concerns that there there may be excess demand at some point. And so had crafted a potential condition to try to address that, that maybe can be tweaked. And I just offer maybe from a practical perspective that, you know, in addition to this being on Tuesday night, which is on a busy night, it's starting at a later hour than you're probably your typical dinner hour. So it's it's between eight and 11 when many diners may already have come and gone.
Oh, that's a really good point. Thank you.
Right, that's a that's a big point. And that that's a huge point for the summer. Yes, thank you.
Lieutenant Denapoli?
The other thing I was going to just bring up to kind of address what Mary Powell was saying, the concern about the the sales and the tickets. We don't want to leave them hanging. Is is it possible, Kenny, to just do it so that, you know, like you start your ticket sales on Wednesday for the following Tuesday and just do it weekly? Rather than doing it advanced out through the summer as we don't know what's going to happen or how things are going to change and develop? That would kind of alleviate that so you're not stuck hanging.
That's a great, I can I can work with my I can definitely work with my people to to try to do that weekly. So we'll just put it out for the week. Based on what we've gotten so far, they seem to sell out so quickly. So if we do a week to week, I don't see that being a problem at all.
I'm just thinking that way you're not getting stuck if something changes or something happens or something you have to adjust.
No, no, I, yeah, exactly. I I I think that that's the right thing, like, we're we're not we don't have any history to base this on. So we're we're reaching out, we want to work with everybody to make sure that that this goes the right way. So I'm I'm happy to do that.
Okay, why don't I, why don't I open it up to the public now? And then maybe we can circle back and think through how we might want to modify the the conditions that are before us tonight. So are there questions or comments from the public with respect to the proposed movie night and entertainment license for the Scarlet Oak Tavern? Okay, seeing none. So Susan, I was kind of wondering about adding, you know, like a qualifier in the very beginning, where it says, subject to the following conditions, in saying something there like, is the same may be modified by the Hingham Police Department and the Hingham Fire Department with a report of change, you know, changes to the conditions being provided to the Board of Selectmen. So we're going to set these up. But then, as things evolve, we would look to, you know, our experts to help us through this. And then maybe in three, we say something like, the event shall take place generally in accordance with the plan, because then if you look above, police and fire can modify the plan. And I think tickets may be sold in advance up to a maximum of 32 vehicles. You know, I think then police and fire could, you know, could could revise that number downward if it needs to be revised downward. And then I'm sort of wondering about maybe the end adding and and maybe the whole thing's just subject to Massachusetts law. But I I think if we're going to say that cars can't idle, we probably need some signage to that effect in the parking lot, I would think. Or at least like on your ticket or something that would tell you that that's something you can't do. So those would be kind of my my suggestions.
So the the first thing, if I could just walk through quickly, I would I would add, because we're dealing with COVID compliance, I would suggest that, and this is unusual, usually it's, you know, the police department or the police and fire on these special event licenses. But in this case, I also add the executive health officer. Because in case Susan sees that it's not the concession table or something is not working, then you want to be able to have her input on that as well.
Absolutely, great suggestion.
On the at my understanding from what what Lieutenant Denapoli was saying earlier, and this is also communications between the working group, is that they are going to put together, and Chris, please correct me if I'm misstating this, but they're going to put together some sort of safety protocol. And I I guess it could probably even be a flyer that gets handed out as each person comes in that says you can't drink alcohol in your car, you have to wear your mask. And maybe that list could have on it, no idling. So there may be a way to do it where each person, as they drive in, are going to be required. Is this what you were thinking, Chris?
Yes, so basically Sergeant Kilroy and I had discussed that and basically putting together like a little informational flyer that we can use to kind of say to people, hey, these are the rules. You know, in the case of an emergency, the event of emergency, this is what you'll do. You'll be directed what you need to do, you'll be directed where to go by the detail officer that's on scene. You know, it'll just be like a general information and then and everything. And again, this is this is going to be an adapt and overcome and best practice, you know. We'll have the first night, we'll see how it goes, we'll figure out what we need to adjust. And and for the next, the following Tuesday, we'll we'll have it adjusted and it'll go even better, I'm sure.
Karen?
Yeah, Joe?
So I I was going to suggest the following changes to the proposed motion. So in item number one, which currently ends with, but the state on May 20, May 18, 2020, I would simply add, as well as other applicable state and local regulations. For paragraph number two, which is the special events, I'm thinking that it would go from June 16, 2020, through July 7, 2020, which date may be extended by the board. And then we'll we would hold a subsequent hearing on that. For paragraph number three, the event shall take place, I would insert substantially in accordance with the layout plan submitted to the board on June 9. For number four, tickets may be sold, may only be sold in advance for up to a maximum of 32 vehicles. I would add, or such fewer vehicles as may be allowed by the restaurant reopening working group. So that includes all the people, I think, that Susan was had identified. And in paragraph eight, applicant shall hire a police detail for such for each event night. And I would add, such detail shall direct traffic exiting the premises as needed to make it clear that that's going to be handled.
Yep.
And then in, I skipped one, sorry. Paragraph seven, this is where there's the distribution of a notice to inform attendees that consumption of alcohol vehicles is prohibited. And I would also add, and also informs attendees, the rules and regulations, attendees of applicable rules and regulations. And then we can, whether or not we want to also add such rules to be reviewed by the by this restaurant reopening working group. And I think that covers the items that we talked about this evening.
Joe, I think you've covered a lot of them. It's a point made earlier about compliance with state laws regarding idling.
Yes.
Is that is that captured in? Is that captured in number seven or number one? Or does that need to be called out?
My intention was it be covered in item number one, applicable state and local regs. But I think if there's any doubt, we can certainly call it out. I don't know what, Susan, do you know what that specific law is?
Um, yeah, just a second. Well, I have to give yeah, I have, we were pulling it up. In fact, I'm trying to see if the reference, I have a fact sheet that the state issued on it, but I'm not sure that Emily pulled up during our meeting. But I am it is the law, okay. It's chapter 90, national law is chapter 90, section 16A and the applicable regulations.
I mean, we could certainly call it out by what thing, as well as other applicable state and local regulations, including without limitation, chapter 90, section 16A, and the implementing regulations thereunder.
I just think that's going to be one of those things, to your point, that we're going to want on the little handout, just because I think it's, you know, it's something, it's certainly something I would do, so. Not meaning to break the law.
I mean, I really, I applaud everyone for actually having in there that there was going to be a handout, although that handout was limited to alcohol issues, but just expanding it to cover all the issues.
Hey, so here the question, I guess, about the date. Because I I'd like to be in a position, and I'm assuming the board would like to be in a position to keep this going, assuming everything's, you know, working well and cooperatively as we are tonight. And my concern, even though I originally suggested the seventh as being the date through which we would provide this license, in order for them to in order for them to continue sort of, you know, uninterrupted, the board would really need to hear the extension of the license by the seventh. And I'm just that, so the week prior, you know, the week prior is 4th of July, we you know, we you might be typically, sometimes we take that off.
Right.
So I just want to, I I don't want to set us up to I I'm kind of wondering about giving it, giving them one more week, just to give the boards time to to get it on their agenda and have a hearing. So that's all I'm saying.
I I think extending it to Bastille Day makes perfect sense.
I think that makes a lot of sense. It also gives, it also gives the Scarlet Oak four weeks. And I think there's going to be a lot of learning, there's going to be a lot of evolution.
Okay.
Yeah.
Kenny, Kenny, where do you, how do you, how are you feeling about where we're ending up here?
I'm I'm really good with that. I'm I'm trying to unmute myself right now because I'm going back to mute from unmute. So I heard Bastille Day and I heard some.
So the 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 thought is that this would grant you a license through July 14, but that a week prior, July 7, we would hold a hearing to review how things are going. So that hopefully at that hearing, it will be extended.
I'm sorry, Kenny, I missed what you're saying.
Fourth
I'm not hearing you very well. I'm not hearing you very well.
Kenny, you're breaking up.
I'm still not hearing you.
Four.
So you'd have, well, if you start next week, you'd have the 16th, the 23rd, the 30th.
Hello?
Are you there?
I, I just hope the movies run better than this connection.
I, I heard, I heard Kenny saying that free tickets for everybody on the phone and free concessions.
I heard the same thing.
I, I, we can confirm that when he comes back on.
Do we need to vote that? So he'd get, he'd get one, two, three, four full, four full times, and you'd hear, you know, you'd potentially hear him that week with the sixth.
Yeah.
You know, or you could hear, you could hear it on the 14th, because he'd, he'd have that night as well. And then, you know, then if changes needed to be made, or he wanted to extend again on the 22nd, on 21st, you'd, he'd have time, you'd have time. Okay, well, I'm assuming he's going to be all in favor of that, wherever he went in the, in the stratosphere of Zoom here. Um, okay.
Back on, and I think he's muted. I, I see he's, I see Kenny's come back on, and maybe Michelle, you could unmute him?
I'm trying to, he's got to accept it.
I'm here now, can you hear me?
There you are.
So Kenny, we decided that it was free apps for everybody on the call tonight.
Yes, definitely. You guys all get free apps, there's no question.
We've just violated some state law on that one.
Okay, wink, wink, nudge, nudge, you get free apps, all of you.
I just didn't take my.
Me too, so.
Yeah, so.
So.
Good, generally.
I want to pivot with all of you, so.
You're generally good with where we've ended up.
Okay. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, good.
Okay, all right, let's move on. I think we've heard Joe's amendments. Susan, do you have any other suggestions? Are you, are you good with what we're thinking?
Yeah, I think, I think that works. I think, like I said, I believe that they've already marked out where the spaces are, so I think it'll be pretty straightforward for the police and fire department representatives to go out there and determine if there's going to be the ability to maneuver and do all of that. Since if he's going to start selling tickets for next Tuesday, it probably is good if, you know, that can get figured out, you know, soon for next week.
Tomorrow, the next day, yeah.
Yeah.
So I, I think I still would like to add the little proviso at the top, just in case the specific conditions, you know, don't pick it up, that that the conditions might maybe modified by the Hingham Police Department, the Hingham Fire Department, the executive self, and the executive health officer. And such changes shall be communicated to the Board of Selectmen. And then Joe, and then Joe had read his, his corrections as well. Mary, are you, are you clear on what we're voting, or should we try to go through that again?
No, I'm, I'm clear, I'm, I think maybe, no, I'm good, I'm good.
And the, and the date we're proposing, the end date we're proposing is July 14.
Correct.
Okay, Joe?
I, I'm not sure I understood your, your comment about local approval with the police, fire, and Board of Health, where would you be adding that language?
In the, in the main sort of, main part of the motion, subject to the following conditions, as the same may be modified by the Hingham Police Department, the Hingham Fire Department, and/or the executive health officer, with such changes being communicated to the Board of Selectmen.
I'm not sure I would.
I just don't want to get, I, I don't want to get technically hung up with, with something that the working group or, you know, I, I think, to me, these are the three expert bodies on the technicalities of this. And, you know, I think you, I think you've made corrections or, you know, changes in particular items, I just don't want to, I don't want something odd to pop up that trips us up. And that, that, that was why I proposed that the way I did.
Okay, so what you're proposing is that either, at any of those departments can make changes to what's being proposed here unilaterally, is that, is that where the, where you're, what you're proposing?
Yeah, but I guess my, my thought was that they, these groups appear to be working together to cooperate with the plan. I mean, maybe it's the reopening group, I don't know. All I'm trying to do is make sure that all of the individual conditions, if we've got to make some changes, that the professionals can advise on that.
Karen, is there, I, I, you guys are better at crafting this language than I am, but is there a way to capture the essence of what you're proposing in item number one? And, you know, it basically, Joe had suggested adding, as well as other applicable state and local regulations. Is there, I'm just wondering if there's a way to capture it in number one?
No, no, but, you know, if this is going to be a hang up, I'm happy to move on. All I'm saying is, we've heard it, I think we get the gist of it, I think now it, we need to see what happens, and we need the people who are expert in this to then advise and continue to craft conditions that are workable for the entertainment license to be successful. And I'm just saying, as the overarching principle, you know, again, maybe it should be the reopening group, so then it's got to be a consensus of those folks around the table, maybe that's a better reference.
So if, if I can just expand on what Mary just said, and Karen, tell me if this works, paragraph number one would say, the applicant shall comply with the specific, sector-specific COVID-19 workplace standards for drive-in movie theaters issued by the state on May 18th, 2020, as well as other applicable state and local regulations, and the directives of the police, fire, and executive health officer.
Well, but what I'm trying to say is that if, you know, like, let's pick five, there should be no amplified sound, all, all audios should be directed to a stereo individual vehicles, if that needs to be, you know, if that needs to be changed, or the concession stand stuff needs to be changed, what, all I'm saying is, you want it to have to come back, and if you do find, I, again, I think we've heard it, we get the gist, and I, and I just assume from my standpoint, delegate that to the, to the professional group who is handling this for the town. And I think you only do that if you add it up above, because then it applies to any one of the conditions below.
I, I, I agree, I think, I think that's right, but I think it's our responsibility to actually issue this and not to delegate the authority to someone else to do it.
We are issuing it, Joe, what I'm saying is, if, if within the provisions that are, are articulated here, because we have provision by provision allowed that to happen. So you're saying you just, you don't want that to happen. I, I'm saying, I think it should be able to happen with any condition here. You're saying you just want it to happen with respect to the conditions that you've identified.
Right, a, a, otherwise, I think we've basically ceded our authority, and maybe it's just my, my background from other boards, but that's not something that I think we should be doing.
Well, I disagree with you on that, but I'm also not willing to get in the weeds any further. So I think we've heard Joe's changes, which appear to be acceptable. Is there a motion with respect to the entertainment license?
Joe, I'm going to let you make the motion, I've been jotting notes, but I'm not sure I captured everything. I'm happy to try if you want.
Okay, well, I will, I will do it and then hold it open, subject to correction and revision by you and by the chair. I move that the board approve the entertainment license application of Scarlet Oak Tavern, 1217 Main Street, for a series of special event drive-in movie nights, subject to the following conditions as follows. One, the applicant shall comply with the sector-specific COVID-19 workplace standards for drive-in movie theaters issued by the state on May 18th, 2020, as well as other applicable state and local, local regulations, including without limitation, chapter 90, section 16A, and the implementing regulations thereunder. Two, the special events may take place on Tuesday nights from June 19th, 2020, through July 14th, 2020, from 8:00 PM to 11:00 PM, which date may be extended by the board. Three, the event shall take place, the event shall take place substantially in accordance with the layout plan submitted to the board on June 9th, 2020. Four, tickets may only be sold in advance for up to a maximum of 32 vehicles, or such few, fewer vehicles as may be allowed by the restaurant reopening working group. Four, there shall be no amplified sound. All audio shall be directed through stereo systems in individual car vehicles. Six, the applicant may maintain a concession stand in the location shown on the layout plan for the sole purpose of movie ticket holders to pick up pre-ordered and prepaid food orders from the Scarlet Oak Restaurant. The provision of food pickup service at the concession stand shall comply with all sector-specific COVID-19 standards for restaurant pickup service. No, no alcohol shall be permitted in pickup orders for any persons holding a drive-in movie ticket. Seven, the applicant shall notify all ticket holders post-signage and distribute with takeout orders a notice that informs attendees that consumption of alcohol in vehicles is prohibited, and also informs attendees of applicable rules and regulations as may be reviewed and approved by the restaurant reopening working group. Eight, the applicant shall hire a police detail for each event night. Such details shall direct traffic exiting the premises as needed. Nine, without limiting the foregoing references to state COVID-19 standards, all employees working at the events, whether in the parking areas or concession stand, and all customers who leave their vehicles for food pickup or to use the restroom, shall wear protective face masks and maintain six feet social distancing at all times. The applicant shall have sufficient staff to direct movie customers to the restroom in accordance with the path of travel shown on the approved layout plan. And 10, customers must watch the movie from their vehicles and remain in their vehicles at all times to access the concession table food pickup and to use the restroom. No customers shall be permitted to watch the movie from outside a vehicle.
Joe, I will second your motion, I would just point out in item number two, I think you said Tuesday nights beginning June 19th, and I think it should be June 16th.
It should be June 16th.
I will second, I will second that motion.
All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Karen?
Aye.
Great, thank you, and great, great work by the town team, and Kenny, good luck with this.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is the adoption of the Hingham Outdoor Table Service Policy pursuant to Governor Baker's teen order 35.
This one, Karen, I, I think Susan is still on the, on the line and might be able to walk us through this.
Okay, Susan, great.
Hello, I'm Town Attorney Counselor, which I did not announce earlier on the call. We have all the members of your staff working group here, except for Michael Clancy, the building commissioner, who couldn't be available tonight. But you have some of the members, I think you've heard from almost everyone. Kristin Anaply from Hingham Fire, Jeff Kilroy from Hingham Police Department, Sergeant Kilroy, Emily Wentworth from Land Use and Zoning, Susan Sarny, the executive health officer, Sharon Perfetti from your office, and hopefully that covers everyone. I don't want to spend too much time on the introduction, but I will say that in addition to all of your staff's full-time, regular jobs and all the other responsibilities they've taken on during the pandemic, all members of this restaurant reopening group have been working all, every day, seven days a week, particularly the health department, working all weekend, working with the restaurants that were allowed to reopen out with existing outdoor seating on, as of Monday. And there have been multiple Zoom meetings, conference calls, hundreds of emails, as Michelle unfortunately found out until she got herself off the email group. Going back and forth with dozens and dozens of establishments, landlords of downtown association, et cetera. The governor, as he's introducing these new phases, is, is not giving anyone a lot of heads up that, when they're starting. So we got the guidance on a Monday, and we were constituted and we're drafting this policy within two days. So I, I just wanted to give, you know, let you know kind of, which you probably already did, how hard all of your staff was working on there. Kind of, everyone has a designated role, and everyone's been working together seamlessly to try to make this happen. So the policy that is in front of you is, is a mandate from the governor's COVID-19 order number 35, which came out a week ago, last Monday, so eight days ago. And what it does is, it loosens up zoning laws and laws and regulations governing the modification of liquor licenses. There is also a pending bill, House Bill 4774, which covers almost the identical language of the governor's order, and also goes beyond and deals with other topics like meals, taxes, and other things, which are not the topic of tonight's discussion. That is pending, that's made its way out of the House, it's pending at the Senate. It would basically just legislatively codify what the governor has done, and is substantially the same as the governor's order. But it has not yet been passed by the legislature, so we're going off the governor's order for the purpose of this policy. But you'll see in the policy that I have this definition of state action, and that, so it's as it may be modified by anything else that comes out of the state, which is defined as a state action. But I don't anticipate that anything that comes out of the state is going to substantially modify what it, what is it in the governor's order or what's included in this policy. So that's the legal basis for, for the policy. The policy allows, the governor's order allows the local licensing authority, which is the Board of Selectmen in Hingham, to issue modifications to permits related to food and beverage establishments, and waives a significant amount of the applicable laws and regulations. So notwithstanding anything in 40A, which is the State Zoning Act, and it waives all a butter notice and public hearing requirements with respect to liquor license modifications. And this is the state's attempt to try to do a little shot of adrenaline into the restaurant industry in the Commonwealth. While this is a significant departure, as far as process for this type of permitting and licensing, there is a cap on this, this is not indefinite. So the governor's order says, you know, November 1st, 2020, all of these approvals turn into pumpkins, they're automatically rescinded by operation of law, and all food and beverage establishments go back to what their permitting status was prior to receiving one of these approvals from the local licensing authority. So while it is a significant departure from the prior statutory process, it is not indefinite. So that, that is the framework, the order requires that before the local licensing authority, and the Board of Selectmen in this case, grants any of these approvals. grants any of these approvals, the board must adopt a process for granting these approvals. And so that is what you have before you, is the policy. Just to clarify, it doesn't apply to restaurants that already had pre-permitted outdoor seating. So for example, the Scarlet Oak Tavern, some of the restaurants down at the shipyard, they already have outdoor dining that people have enjoyed for years. As long as they can space their seating and follow all the other COVID-nineteen state restaurant-specific standards, they were allowed to start operating yesterday, and a number of them already have. Most of them have been in contact with our executive health officer, Susan Sarnie, sending her many questions, and she has been responding to all of them. You know, we had one restaurant that shall go unnamed, decided to expand on its own initiative, but they were quickly found out and they were, discussions were had with them and their landlord, and they understood that they have to follow the process. They've pulled back to their original permitted, and they will be coming in to try to spread out some more. So this will apply to any food establishment, whether they have a liquor license or not, that does not have currently permitted outdoor tables and want to either set up new or expanded outdoor seating area. And so that is, that is the framework for what this is addressing. I, I don't want to, depending on, I, I know you've all seen it and have read it, so I don't know how much detail you want me to get into for the benefit of the public, but it obviously requires compliance with all the applicable state COVID-nineteen standards. And then there is a application process and required submissions. The application process, the working group has been working diligently to try to streamline that. There will be a one-page kind of master comment application that Emily Wentworth is preparing, but the whole group is reviewing. So as each of these things are drafted, it's going out to the full group, and we're having Zoom meetings and we're walking. And then in, on that application, they will indicate the various different approvals they may want to come to the board for. And then based on which boxes they check, they will then have a link to the applicable application. So if on the master application, they say, we want to modify our liquor license, they will provide it with a link to the A B C liquor license modification form, which they will fill out and include with their master application. So it will all be one-stop shopping. They'll be able to go into this policy and literally click on a link and be brought right into the application. For the A B C, the A B C C liquor license, they have their own form. Any of the other forms, Emily has made them all PDF fill in, so they'll literally be able to click on a link, go to the application and fill in the blanks. And they won't have to print it out and write it in, and it will all just be able to fill it in. So we're trying to make it as efficient and simple as it can be under the circumstances. The one detailed submission that every establishment will have to provide is a plan. So just like with Scarlet Oak Tavern, it's a little different because that was a drive-in movie, but a similar situation, and there's attached to the, to the revised policy that you received by email this afternoon, there is attached a sample layout plan showing each of the establishments the type of information they need to put on the plan. So they need to show the location of the tables, that they need to show the six-foot distance between each, it's not between the tables, it's between each diner sitting at the table have to be six feet apart. They need to show the path of travel. So there is information that's laid out in the process, and there's a sample attached as to the type of information that's needed. This, this is intended to be a one-stop shopping kind of, you know, expedited streamlined process. But once they submit everything, that's when the working group is really going to do, do the meat of this, because every location is site-specific. What might work for a restaurant at the shipyard that has very large pedestrian walkways and they can expand easily is not going to work in the square, for example. So those are the types of, those are the types of details that the working group is set up between Emily's experience working for the zoning board, Susan working, looking at the COVID-nineteen health compliance issues, Mike Clancy looking at handicap accessibility, and then Sergeant Kilroy and Lieutenant Donapoli looking at the, the fire and public safety issues. And we, this has already started, there's actually one who came in very early and was very far developed in their plans, they know they still have to file the formal application, but they already are almost there with, like tomorrow, they'll probably, they may be ready to apply because they have a plan that they've already worked through and that the whole group, working group has gotten on a Zoom meeting and walked through together and given them feedback, and they've already revised the plan. So it's so far, for the first one we have, which is kind of our test one, it's, it's working very well. They've worked with their abutter, they went to their abutter, they wanted to put a couple of tables that might extend in front of their, their abutters shop window. The abutter is aware of the plan, has written a letter of support of the plan. So all, everything that would be done in a long-drawn-out potentially zoning process is being consolidated, and everyone's working cooperatively to hit all of those points that you would hit. And the goal is that hopefully the working group, your, the, the six members of your staff will be able to work with all of these establishments so that by the time Sharon, Sharon is the one who's doing all the liquor license work, she's maintaining a spreadsheet of all the requests, and she's maintaining a checklist of all the submissions. So that by the time the working group says, okay, we have everything, make a recommendation to the Board of Selectmen, and then be able to put it on an agenda for you to review and have a discussion like you did today for Scarlet Oak. So I know that was a lot of me talking, I'm going to stop. And, and hopefully I've hit all the high points. And then I'm available for any details about the policy, and all of the working group members are still on the call for any of the kind of department-specific questions or concerns you might have.
Great, thank you, Susan. And, you know, I'll, I'll take you back to where you started, which is this, this is an incredible effort and would have been an incredible effort under any circumstances, but given, I think, the, the pressure to respond, the evolving conditions that we're all trying to understand, the motivation to keep the town safe while trying to open up our, our, our local economy. You know, I really, really appreciate you recognizing, you know, first of all, I recognize your work, but the work of the town staff in, you know, keeping the municipality going and, you know, being able to respond to these just changing orders from the state. So this is just really an incredible effort, incredibly detailed and comprehensive, and, you know, it sounds like user-friendly as well, which I think, again, kind of meets the spirit of this, to move as quickly as possible to, to respond to requests. I don't know whether there's anybody else from the working group who'd like to make a comment at this point, or I can certainly start with the questions from my colleagues. Anybody else from the working group care to comment? Not seeing anybody. Joe, this is your world. Take it away.
Well, I'm just so impressed by the work that the working group, you know, Mike Clancy, Kristin Appley, Jeff Kilroy, Sharon Profetti, Susan Sarnie, Emily Wentworth, and their esteemed advisor, Susan Murphy, just remarkable what's been put together. So, so thank you. I wanted to ask a couple of questions about section five, which is the application process. I did not see any mention of insurance. Is there any reason that applicants need to show that their activities will be covered by insurance when they're dealing with the outdoor seating?
So with respect to insurance, I've, I've spoken to Sharon about this in the context of the liquor license.
Right, I'm aware of the liquor license, but other than the liquor.
So the, I mean, in the same way, so it all depends on where they want to put this outdoor seating. If they are seeking to use public property, so in one instance, we have a restaurant that wants to expand onto a public sidewalk, one of the additional items that will be coming before the board in which they're requesting is going to be a license, and that'll be similar to like, you know, revocable licenses that the board has given in other instances to private property owners who want to use for a short-term, use public property. And in those license forms, the town would require insurance. If they are already operating on private property, either that they own or that it's their landlord's, then that's not typically, outside of what's required for their liquor license, the town doesn't typically require insurance in the normal, say, zoning permitting standpoint, like insurance. So the insurance will be apply always with the liquor license, and then if they, if they are seeking to be on public property.
Okay, great. You mentioned in, in the one instance about the restaurant had spoken to their abutters just to make sure everything was fine, and the abutter wrote a letter of approval. I didn't see anything in the regulations that are being proposed that would require in the application process notification of abutters or even identifying who the abutters are. Is it there? I missed it or, or not?
No, it's not there. So I have a two-part response to that. The first reason is because the governor's order and then the pending legislation has basically wiped out all legal requirements for any of that. Now, that doesn't mean you don't tell your neighbors what's going on, but there's no legal requirement of any notices. So the working group's thought, and of course, this is for the board's consideration, the working group, in the same way that, though you're depending on their area of expertise, in the same way that the working group is, is identifying every issue, and believe me, your staff is being very diligent in flagging every possible issue on every plan, in the same way that they're doing that for, saying, pedestrian safety or car vehicles, or are the proper railings or barriers being put up for A B C C, or the COVID being met? Every, those types of issues of who is this going to impact is something that the working group has on their kind of internal of, we've got to look at and see the impacts of this. And so because it's not, it's not only not legislatively mandated, it's in fact legislatively waived, and because the working group intends to make that one of the items that it will be focused on, it was not proposed to be included as a specific requirement, and that, that's the reason, you know, and, and, you know, for the board's consideration.
So I, I understand it's not mandated at the state level, but that's certainly something that local authorities can consider and perhaps insist on. And my concern is that we don't want to have one shop open, and as a result, a neighboring shop has to close. For example, you know, the, the aroma of food may disturb, may prevent customers from wanting to go to another shop. And that may be an unintended consequence that the working group may not be aware of unless they actually speak to the abutters. And so would, would it be a burden to include in the application process, on the application, they have, that the applicant would simply need to list who the immediate abutters are next to and across the street? And so at, at least there's some ability for, you know, if this is going to be displayed on a website or somehow for abutters to know what's about to happen before the Board of Selectmen approve it. And then we get the call saying, why did you approve it? Because it's going to have a negative impact on my business. So I'm, I'm not looking to slow down the process, I'm looking to simply expand the level of communication that goes out to the neighbors and actually comes in to the working group before we, as a board, have to make a decision with respect to any application. Is that something that can be worked in, in your mind, Susan?
Any provisions that the Board of Selectmen feel are appropriate for this process can certainly be worked in. I don't know if anyone else in the group has any, any thoughts about it. Again, I'm just trying to, you know, do my legal thing here and put into writing what the, the thoughts of the group were on the appropriate process. So I'm, I'm happy to work in to this, whatever the, the working group and the, and the board feels would be appropriate.
Emily, did you have a thought on that?
Um, so I think our overarching goal in developing the policy was to help businesses get up and running as soon as possible. I do feel like because the working group has representatives from all these different departments, that we have a strong sense, based on our experiences, to what issues may arise. And, and then similar to what you did with the Scarlet Oak, excuse me, review, you could put in these kind of check-ins to see whether things are working out or not. There's certainly a lot of areas that, you know, some restaurant may be up at the, the range or something. If they were going to expand because they're so far separated from any other abutter, you know, there, there wouldn't likely be any impacts.
Right.
And then there might be others where it, it would be appropriate to have a, you know, post outdoor seating type of review to make sure if there's amplified sound that, you know, that could be addressed.
Joe, I'd, I'd just like to also point out that in section eight, there are proposed findings for the board to consider. And, you know, the working group might make recommendations for this, but obviously the board would need to make them, you're familiar from your special permit pages on the findings. I mean, numbered, letter D, eight D, could be, right now, it only, it only speaks to residential abutters, but that, that finding could be tweaked so that if, if, you know, if the working group, you know, dropped the ball, which will not happen, but let's say that happened, and, you know, the board said, hey, wait a minute, you've, did you, what about this store next door or this abutter next door? We really need to get their input, then it could, it could get, it could get flagged. But the working group knows that these are the findings you need to make, so they're going to make sure that, or to the best of their ability, that if there's potential impacts, they're going to get floated. So, you know, again, it, it's up to the board as to what you feel like is appropriate. I, I think the reason why the governor and the state was waiving those the, the time delay, if you need to send out notices and then give people a reasonable amount of time to respond, and no one's trying to cut out the concerns of the abutters, so I don't want to make it sound like that either. I think that the state was just trying to encourage a process that would expedite that beyond what the normal statutory periods are, not disregard abutters, but somehow find a way to streamline the process of vetting those items.
Yep.
So I, I was going to ask there, why, why, I had flagged that to ask why was only residential abutters and not commercial abutters, you know, that would, I think, speak more directly to Joe's point. You know, was there a reason you limited it to residential abutters?
Um, part of it was just because to the extent these were new outside areas, then, and it's going to be, well, it might not be just that some, if you live in a home, so let's say you're in the downtown, which has a lot of close-by residential neighbors, and they're not used to having outdoor activities going on in commercial businesses, that they might be the most impacted. If, if you have, if you're talking about the shipyard or Derby Street Shops, those individual restaurant owners, they're not, they may be abutters in the sense that they have a business next door, but they're not legal abutters. The abutter is, so if you're talking about Derby Street Shops, you're a butter if your be good is not the store. You're a butter if your be good is not the store next door to you. It's the butter to the entire shopping center. So it's like it has a completely different context in, from a zoning perspective. Um, than it does in, in this situation. So um, you know, downtown where the abutters might actually be different business owners that own their space. Um, then this might apply more. I, I think that's why I'm saying that the working group was thinking we have to look at it on a case by case basis. Because you know, if you're a, if you're restaurant A at Derby Street shops. And you come into the zoning board or the planning board to modify your permit. You're not notifying the other stores in your shopping center. You're notifying a butters outside the shopping center. So I, I guess we, we just need to clarify who we're talking about.
I guess, can, can, can I, can we stop there for a sec? I guess all, what I'm hearing Joe saying and what was my concern as well is less a zoning concept and more a, you know, take a look at the neighborhood and make sure that, you know, the use or expanded use is not going to interfere, you know, with the, the, um, you know, it sounds like you do this anyway. But with like the traffic pattern or, you know, i- in any other way could impede the business that, you know, resides next door. You know, I just, maybe there's some language that we could indicate that part of the finding would be, you know, no detrimental effect to neighboring businesses or something along that line.
Yeah, I, I was actually going to follow up on that and just under eight D to say potential impacts on residential butters and neighboring businesses. If any, from light, and I would, I would do light, noise and smell.
Hold on, okay. Okay, and um, neighboring businesses, okay.
Yep.
Anything further, Joe?
Uh, yes, let's see here. I, I'm not asking for this, but I'm wondering, is, is there any appeal process? If someone comes to us, they ask for, for, for some relief and we don't give it to them. Is there any appeal or we don't give them enough? What would be the next step for them?
No, this is under the state, because this is such a special accommodation under the state guideline. There's no, this is completely discretionary on behalf of the board.
Okay.
So if, if the, if the police and fire were to come and say, we get it, we sympathize with this business. But there is absolutely no way to do this safely, then you, you could in your discretion say, we, we just can't let you do it. And, and that's it.
Okay, got it. Um, moving down to section six. Um, and I know this is from the state guidelines, uh, limit tables to no more than six guests per table. Um, it just seems odd because big tables can accommodate more, more guests than smaller tables. And there's no uh, reflection of the size of the table on this. It's, should we have anything in there or just leave it at the six?
Um, Susan, do you want to?
I, I, I think that get, I mean, table radius, I think it kind of gets in the weeds a little bit. If the, the parties come in together and that's what the state guidelines have said. I, I don't know. I think I, is there any, any sort of board of health regulation about how big tables need to be?
Yeah, that, um, this is Susan. There is only allowed six people per table per COVID um, regulations.
Okay. Um, and um, going down to six, it's still in A double I. Uh, methods, method and materials of defining areas. And says, uh, proper protective barriers shall be in place to maintain public safety, not a simple rope or yellow tape. So what are examples of proper protective barriers?
So for example, I'll just, if you're familiar with the, the businesses down at the shipyard. So I'd say Trident or Wahlburgers or Boathouse Bistro. They all have some sort of, they're all different, but they all have some sort of defining. There are, one might be a little, a short metal fence. One Wahlburgers has, I think, a, a brick wall of some sort. Trident uses planters. And the, and that is because if you are serving alcohol under A B C C regulations, these are state regulations. There has to be a demarcation so that the alcohol is staying within that area. So it doesn't allow just something like, um, you know, a
Sure.
No, that, that's where it comes from.
Okay, I'm, I'm just trying to figure out what would be appropriate in the downtown Hingham area.
So in the downtown Hingham area, um, I, I don't think it's, it's a surprise or I'm disclosing too much that right now, the only restaurant that really has sidewalk depth in order to potentially accommodate um, outdoor seating is Square Cafe. That is the restaurant that we have had the most communications with. Their original plan had no separation, so the guidance to them was to find something. They are proposing a combination of kind of a movable, um, kind of low metal fencing.
Yep.
And on the corner where there have been one or two accidents where cars have driven up onto the sidewalk and smashed into the restaurant. They are proposing heavy concrete planters that would like decorative planters, but very, and those are being reviewed by public safety to see whether or not they're sufficient. So those are the types of things that are being proposed.
Okay, that sounds very workable. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks, Joe. Uh, Mary, questions? Mary, I think you're muted.
Thank you. Thank you, Michelle. Um, yeah, so um, I had a couple of questions that were answered, uh, that were answered today. Uh, or information that was provided today. Um, I would just, a couple of things for my colleagues to consider. Um, under section two A, it says all establishments must provide food service in order to be eligible. Um, I did ask Susan, but you know, I, I think to me, if, if we're going to be granting some of this. Um, it would be important to me that these restaurants are serving food up until a reasonable time before closing. Um, which I think is typically like, you know, about a half hour before the, the hours that were listed. I, I don't know if we need to specify that or not, but it was something that caught my attention. Um, I also asked a question earlier today as to whether um, the applicant was required to attend our hearing. Uh, where, you know, where we would, uh, you know, where we would, where we would give this license. And um, uh, I think right now, according to council, it's, you know, we're basically letting the applicant know. Um, I, I actually think the applicant needs to participate. It's a, it's a Zoom call. It's not coming to a meeting. But I just think that all the, all of this is so important and I don't want there to be any kind of misunderstandings about things. So I would um, ask us to consider, uh, consider requiring that. Um, I, I think
Where would you put that?
I can suggest some.
I'm, I'm not sure where it would go. I, I will leave that to people who are better at this than me. Um, I, I think the one thing that I want to make sure of in this, and I, I think listening to the conversation, my concern is, is alleviated. Um, especially as we're talking about a butter notification. I want to make sure in this, particularly in the square, that, um, you know, that, that sort of the first guy to the well doesn't, you know, doesn't necessarily preclude somebody else from doing something. And knowing in particular in the square that, that the real estate and the amount of outdoor space is in limited supply. I, I, I want to make sure that the business that potentially, um, you know, is, is not as far along as some others. Um, doesn't get rejected because of other decisions that we've made. Um, I, I'm more comfortable with that, given what we're talking about tonight. Um, but it is something that is important to me. And then just the last thing I would say is that um, understanding our collective interest in helping the restaurants begin to, um, you know, reestablish their business. Um, I think as a board, it particularly at the very beginning. Um, I, I think, and I hope we would all be open to the possibility of having additional meetings as needed to um, make approvals. I know the reopening committee is working super hard to kind of move these things through. I, I don't want the board of selectmen's schedule to be an impediment to um, to somebody being able to, to do this. So those, those are kind of my comments slash questions.
Okay, great, Mary. So the kitchen hours concept, um, I don't know, Emily or Susan Sarny, could you speak to that? Like, so if they've got outdoor tables, um, and an inside premises. Would the hours outdoor, could the hours outdoors be more limited? And um, you know, at, at the very least, should coincide with the hours indoors? So that the, the kitchen closing would be consistent? Are we, is there a way to think about that?
Yeah, uh, Emily here, sorry. Um, from a zoning perspective, the zoning board, when they issue special permits for restaurants does typically impose um, a condition that the outdoor seating has to conclude within an hour of the kitchen closing. So I mean, that's the timeframe that they've been looking at in the past. Um, Susan Sarny might be able to speak more to, you know, whether or not that approach is affected by the, the COVID regulations. Because you know, the, the order is related only to outdoor table seating. And it can't be for people to just sit and hang out and, um, you know, have a drink. Um, there has to be food service at the same time, so.
Yeah, I would, whatever Emily said for zoning regulations is what we would imply for COVID regulations.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
Um, and then there was, there was one other that Mary mentioned, and that was on, she wants the owners to attend.
Yeah.
I believe we can add that in item five E where it says, we'll let you know when the meeting is. And we can say, and the applicant shall be extended, you know, expected to attend such meeting or something to that effect. We could add that expectation there.
Yeah, the applicant or representative of the applicant. Right?
Yep.
Um, I agree, you know, I, because what, what I think can happen, right? And I, I think people are usually pretty good about showing up. But if we have these on the spot questions that we, we need to answer, I think it's, it's really to their benefit. Because I think what ends up happening is we have to continue it and that's not the goal here. So, um, and again, it's not like they've got to show up at, right now, show up at town hall, so.
I could, I could see where we were doing what we did with the Scarlet Oak tonight. And knowing, knowing kind of what would, what would be acceptable to the applicant and what, what might feel burdensome to the applicant uh, would be important.
Yep, I, I totally agree. Um, okay. Uh, so the liquor license requirements, so I'm assuming if, if somebody doesn't have permitted outdoor seating right now and they want permitted outdoor seating and they want to be able to serve alcohol, then that is an expansion of their license premises. So in addition to this OTS, they would, would they need to come before us? Or is the OT, does the OTS process contemplate that expanded liquor license? Now, is that part of the checklist?
Yeah, so the, the, the thought is that they would, so they would need to come before you just for approval, almost like, we'll call it, you know, zoning approval light kind of thing. Um, kind of you're sitting in the shoes of what the second floor would normally do and say, yes, that this is a safe, appropriate area. That would be the first thing. And then it would be a liquor license. Or if they were not an established with a liquor license, it would be um, the common victualer's license. And Sharon can speak to either of those. Um, and then, so those would, those would be, they definitely need to. They definitely need you to be okay with the location. Um, and that would be input from, you know, it meets the board of health regulations. It meets all safety requirements, et cetera. Um, and then they would need either liquor or common vic modification. Um, so definitely they need those two. If they are looking to use public property, they would also be, it would be one, he, it would be one meeting that you would be having. It wouldn't be a public hearing, but it would be one meeting where you would take up everything. If they were looking for an entertainment license on top of that, then that would all be. The, the one thing that they would have to seek approval for separately is if they want to put up a tent. Then we are providing the link to the um, application through the building department in order to get a tent permit. So if they want outdoor seating and they want to be able to cover it.
Okay.
That, but that link would still be in the, is in this policy, so they could still do that. And, but you would be aware, because that box would be checked on their master application, that that was one of the things they were intending to do.
Got it. And then how about for people that have permitted outdoor seating but want to now expand it? So, you know, let's assume for one second that um, Square Cafe could have had seating on the tunnel cap, but then wanted permission to extend the length of the tunnel cap or something. I'm assuming any increase in outdoor, outdoor seating for establishments that have permitted outdoor seating would, would be required to go through this process?
Yes, it's any new or extension is what it covers.
Okay. That was a good, good discussion about abutters. Um, because I, as you've all pointed out, you know, I think we're not, we're not trying to minimize the issues or concerns of the folks that, you know, live or work in this general area. Uh, but we're trying to come up with a process that, um, you know, takes those concerns into effect, but expedites the, the timeline. Um, so, and I, so I like Joe's addition to the findings section there. Uh, okay. Uh, what at this point, I'll open it up to the public for questions or comments with respect to the
Karen, I'm sorry to interrupt. I just noticed, I think that Lieutenant Denapoli might have some
Lieutenant Denapoli.
Yes, I just wanted to address Joe's concern about the safety and such, and that's one thing that we're very keen on. Um, you know, just, I'll give you an example of the shipyard, the space between Sapa and Boathouse Bistro, that walkway along there between we have Wahlburgers and Trident all have facilities. You know, they discussed expanding into that walkway, which isn't necessarily a problem. But again, what we talked about is blocking it off with either heavy planters or barriers of some sort that are going to protect it. I mean, not that people, people do drive through there occasionally, but just thinking that there's going to be more people out and about, more people on these places. And that's one of the things we're looking at is that it has to be a sufficient barrier and it has to be, you know, we're going to try and make it as aesthetically pleasing as possible, but at times it may not just, may not be the prettiest barrier, but it'll be the safest barrier, so.
Yep. Okay, I appreciate that. Um, any other?
Yep, and then Karen, I'm sorry, I just, I think it would be helpful to hear from, from Susan Sarny. Because she's the one who's been fielding dozens and dozens of calls and emails over the last week about the restaurants.
Sure. Yeah, happy, happy to hear from Susan.
I think we're all doing a great job and we can field the questions and then hit it off to you guys. And we have a good team with fire safety and Susan Murphy especially is leading this and I couldn't have done it without her. There's a lot of questions and we need to be sure that if we're going to be adding seating to downtown, it's in a safety manner. Along with COVID and we're, a lot of restaurants, from what I've heard, are changing. Because they might want outdoor seating, but then they're going to be allowed indoor capacity in a week or two. So it's, it's, it's moving so fast and that's why we have this working group to move so fast. And we need to react as other towns are allowing it.
Yeah, no, I, I completely agree. And to your point, I think the coordination among the, uh, you know, sort of the resident experts here. Um, on top of everything else to come together and, and tackle just even this aspect of reopening. And I think to hang on, this is a big, this is a big piece of local economy. There, there's certainly the retail aspect, but um, you know, the restaurant business down here is, is, is just, it's critical to the community feel. And it's also critical to the local economy. So um, it, it, it's going to be interesting too, I think, as to when, when folks can dine indoors. You know, is there still a, a personal preference to be outside when you can?
Yeah, I think exactly. If we, I mean, looking at Governor Baker, uh, phase is three weeks. If maybe indoors is a week and a half, he doesn't speak dates. And if they only can put two seats outside, are they going to allow, you know, they rather preference for indoors? That's the whole discussion. And that's why the working group is spectacular, because we're just fielding emails every hour and trying to react to get everybody's economy going. I mean, we want everybody to be able to, be able to offer the best outdoor experience, indoor experience in the town of Hingham. And be reactionary of Governor Baker's orders.
Right, and still, but still take account of why we're in this situation in the first place and
Yeah.
you know, right? You know, right, I mean, I think the governor's trying to be responsible in, uh, in publishing these plans. You know, I think he and his team are trying to move as quickly as possible in a responsible way. And then we've got to, to your point, we've got to take in those comprehensive plans by sector and by phase and figure out how that, how that works safely in Hangum. And again, we, we appreciate everybody's efforts, um, in that regard. So, thank you. Um, okay, now if there's any questions or comments from the public with respect to the, um, outdoor table service, um, regulations that are, we're discussing this evening.
Um, this is Lynn Barclay. I have a question.
Sure, Lynn, go ahead.
Hi, how are you? I'm not zoomed, I'm just through the phone. I couldn't figure out the Zoom thing, so, for whatever reason. Um, but I just had a question on how abutters will be informed and what action they'll take. Because I think the whole reason for doing this is to expedite it so that it's, we can get up and running quickly and, and extend the footprint for outdoor seating. So can you explain to me by putting that language in there, what that will do with the process, um, in terms of how abutters can react to the decision?
I mean, Su- Susan may wanna take, take this on. I think what we, the, the language that we were intending to add is in section eight, which is findings, which is what the Board of Selectmen would have to determine in order to grant the, you know, the OTS and related licenses. And I think all we're saying is we'd like the working group, as they assemble these app, applications, to give the Board of Selectmen, you know, sufficient information so that they know, um, that there won't be negative impacts from light, noise or odor, either to residential abutters or to neighboring businesses. So I, I think what, I think our intent would be, um, to, to make sure that, uh, there's public notice of this process, but my understanding, um, the, the, the gathering of the information, the diligence necessary to provide the board with the information it needs for the findings would be, would come through the working group. Have I misstated that, Susan Murphy?
I, I believe that that's where the board ended up, but I don't, I don't want to, you know, Joe, Joe, Joe might want to speak to that because I know he raised the concern.
No, I, I think that's exactly right. I think Ca- Karen said it. Um, so there will be a public notice of our hearing, and so the applicants will be listed, so there'll be a public notification of what's going on. And it would be my, it would be my expectation that at the hearing, I will be asking, did you contact your neighbor and what did they say? Um, and if the response is, no, I didn't, then I will be hesitant to move forward.
Well, but I, 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 I guess I also thought that the, that the working group was going to be able to take, take that into account so that.
Yes.
When a working group makes the presentation, they can say to you, here's why we, here's why we think it meets the standard in the findings, that there should be no.
Yes.
Impact to the neighbor. So I, as an applicant, might not have contacted the abutter, but I think because of the way this process works, the, the information would be before the board in order to make a determination that there's no negative impact on the, uh, the abutters or neighboring businesses.
Right. So I'm Karen, it's Lynn Barclay again. So the onus is on the applicant to inform the abutters of, of their, um, of their application or their permit, if you will. And then, I mean, let's just keep in mind that this is a temporary situation. It's only till November 1st.
Right. So I guess, I guess my response to that, and, and Joe and Mary should chime in here. I, I think it's their, look, I, I think it's their obligation as a neighbor, right, to, to do that. Um, I don't think there's any requirement in the rules and regulations as it's put forth here, but I think to be successful, um, I, I, you know, I do think that that kind of cooperation is gonna be helpful. I think, to me, what I heard Susan say was, part of the governor's, um, approach was to take off the table the typical abutter notice period, which is what, usually 14 days or something like that, because that ends up slowing the process down. And if we did that, we'd be in August before we're, you know, before anybody can eat outside. So I, I think the idea, I think what we were sort of saying is we want to make sure holistically this seems to work. And it sounded to me, from what Emily Wentworth was saying, was that these considerations they had thought about already and maybe, you know, we just fine tuned that. But I, I don't think, again, somebody else jump in, I don't think there's any requirement that a, a business notify a neighbor on the one hand. On the other hand, I, I think that that's gonna make this whole thing more successful.
I, I think that's right. The requ- the requirement is on the Board of Selectmen to make a finding that the potential impacts on residential abutters and neighboring businesses will be mitigated. And so it's gonna be, you know, the working group and the applicant should make sure we have the information so that we can make that finding.
And Karen, I just want to clarify, I think, I don't know if it was Joe, I'm sorry, I can't remember who raised the question about appeals. I think it was Joe. I mean, there is no formal appeal process like you have under a typical zoning type of review or that type of thing. There are, there are though, other statutory ways if people are, you know, object to the act of a governmental official, that they can bring certain actions under state law. So it doesn't mean, oh, the board can allow anything or disallow anything and no one can ever do it about it, you know? There's always a way for somebody to, to, um, bring a suit if they're unhappy. And of course, the goal of everybody, the town, the working group in particular, and of course, the, the business owners, nobody wants, nobody wants to end up in a lawsuit just because they're trying to get their business up and running and serve a few meals outside. So, you know, I, I think that the working group and as, as your board, um, will be very attentive to, to this issue and making sure that people in the immediate vicinity who could possibly be impacted at least are aware that it's, it's being proposed.
Lynn, anything further?
No, thank you.
Thanks for raising that. Uh, further, Chief Olson.
Good evening, Chief Olson. Um, having experienced going through many of these permit processes with the planning board, the zoning board, liquor licenses and other applications in front of the boards, I think one of the things that we've always done, um, is, you know, how is this going to affect the people around them? How is it gonna affect neighbors? What are the issues? Oftentimes, we would reach out on our own just to get a feeling for that. And, um, I could tell you, having worked with Joe for many years on the planning board, anything I go, if I'm gonna bring from, something in front of the Board of Selectmen, I can, I know that that's a question Joe's gonna be asked, so I'm gonna be prepared for that answer. So I think we, we understand what the board's looking for and I think the, uh, that's something, um, I feel pretty confident that the, the review boards will handle and discuss and, and make you aware of any issues they foresee regarding neighborhood issues or, uh, resident issues.
Great.
But Chief, I don't know how many times I've told you, I'm not on the, not been on the planning board, it's the zoning board.
The zoning board, I apologize.
Uh, further questions or comments from, uh, from anybody on the line? So is there, are there a couple amendments then to this? Um, one in eight D and was there an amendment for Mary's?
Yeah, so if I can propose a motion with the amendments?
Yeah, did you get, you got Mary's?
I believe I did.
Okay.
I would move that the board adopt the Town of Hangum COVID-19 temporary policy regarding restaurant outdoor table service in the form of the draft dated June 9, 2020, with changes noted below, and that such policy be deemed effective immediately. The, the policy changes are as follows. Section five E requiring the applicant or its representative to attend hearings by the local licensing authority, and a change in section eight D findings, letter D, potential impacts on residential abutters and neighboring businesses, if any, from light, noise and odor will be mitigated.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Karen?
Aye.
Great. Well, thanks. That, that was really, this is really, really good stuff. And, uh, I, I'm anxiously awaiting some outdoor dining.
Yes, absolutely.
Really good work, everybody, though. Really, really good work. Um, okay, before we go to the COVID-19 update, we've got a couple of votes. Can we move to those? At this point, um, we had, uh, we'd been provided with a copy of the concession agreement for Lynch Field with Hangum Little League, Hangum Youth Hockey and Hangum Youth Football. So one year extension of that, um, concession agreement. Um, I, I had a few questions that have been answered. Um, Joe or Mary, any questions on that one year extension of the existing concession agreement?
Uh, I did. Um, whether or not it is a one year, I thought there was an automatic renewal, uh, that, that the, um, uh, let's see, uh, renewal, that section five, they have an option to renew upon 90 days' notice to the town. Um, it, it, was that the intention? Or, uh, is this really intended to be a, a one year renewal to be reviewed at a subsequent time?
That's a, they can request a renewal.
Yeah.
So this, so the, the form, the form may not be kind of the form that if I was drafting from scratch, this is a, this is a National Park Service mandated form that we're allowed to tailor to specific uses, but we try to stick to their language as much as possible because if we make substantive changes, they have to approve every single one of them. Um, that, these typically, they say, you know, upon so many months' notice that they can request a renewal. But, um, that doesn't mean they are guaranteed the renewal. It just says you have to ask so much time in advance if you want it renewed. I mean, I, it's language that's in the form, that's not even, you know, at the end of the day, if they ask one day before and the board wants to give it to them, the board can give it to them. But it's, it's just kind of a indication that if they want to renew, they should start the conversation sooner with the town than later.
Okay, I'm, I'm fine with it.
Okay.
Mary, any questions?
Uh, no, my questions were answered earlier today.
Great. Um, any questions or concerns from the public with respect to the concession agreement at Lynch Field? I am not seeing any. Uh, I would accept a motion.
I move, uh, that the board sign the concession agreement for Lynch Field with Hangum Little League, Hangum Youth Hockey and Hangum Youth Football for a one-year term ending June 14, 2021.
Second.
All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Mary? Mary?
Aye.
Uh, Karen?
Aye.
Okay. Um, next up is, um, the appointment of Erin Walsh as the Director of Assessing. I know Rick is on the line. Um, Tom, I don't know whether you want to introduce this or should turn it over to Rick?
Sure, yeah. We posted ours. So our esteemed, longtime Town Assessor, Rick Nallin, is, um, unfortunately, planning to leave us and via retirement at the end of June. I've tried hard to dissuade that, but apparently this is his life plan. So not much I can do about that.
The male charm has its limits.
That's right, it has its limits. Uh, well deserved, obviously, retirement. We're very happy for him. And, uh, and he has, true to form, been very diligent in providing us with, um, with a strong bench, per se. Um, Erin Walsh is, is the Assistant Assessor and has been in the office for several years. She's been in the role of Assistant Assessor for a little over a year, I believe. Um, he, uh, Rick has worked hard in bringing her along. Uh, she's a big part of the, uh, of the town's finance team. He brings her into all of our discussions, uh, that, when, when they come up to the office to, to walk through, uh, certain aspects of, of the, of the position. And, uh, she has shown at every turn that, Erin is, has shown at every turn that she's fully capable of being the Town Assessor in Hangum. Um, that said, we pu- we published a, a job opening, a posting for the position as an internal posting first, as we often do, um, and received, uh, she, hers was the only application we received. We interviewed her, uh, with, um, the team on the interview with myself, Michelle Monseguere, uh, um, uh, Lisa Campbell, our HR Director was on the line. We had Chrissy Roberts from the Council on Aging. And who am I missing, Michelle?
Sue Nickerson?
Sue Nickerson, thank you, was on the line as, as, uh, as a member of our, uh, finance team. And, uh, everybody, um, left that meeting with an, with an absolute, uh, you know, it was an obvious, uh, choice that Erin was very well qualified, excited and, and, um, and looking forward to, to being able to take on the role as, as assessor. Rick has provided me with a, a strong recommendation for Erin. Uh, we've provided you and your packets, the job description, as well as the, um, Erin's resume. And, um, the Board of Assessors took up my recommendation of Erin per the Town Administrative Bylaw and have, um, have, have endorsed my, um, have endorsed my, my selection of Erin, or my recommendation of Erin, um, as the, as the Town Assessor. So now it goes to the Board of Selectmen.
Fantastic. Rick, would you care to make any comments?
Good evening. Hi, how are you?
Good.
Rick Nallin, Tom Sosa. Uh, I just want to, you know, go along with what Tom said. I'm, you know, I feel Erin's a very strong candidate. You know, she's worked with me for almost seven years and the last year as the Assistant Assessor, and I think she'd be a great candidate. And, um, that's about all I have to say, but thank you.
Thanks, Rick. Um, are there any members of the Board of Assessors on the call tonight? Not seeing any. Not seeing any, but we do have their letter.
Yeah, I know, I, I neglected to say it was a unanimous vote in, in her support.
Okay, great, thank you. Uh, Joe, questions on the, um, request for approval of the appointment of Erin Walsh as the Director of Assessing?
I think it's an excellent selection. I think she's got the educational background, the experience and the track record for the position, and I fully endorse this, uh, this move.
Thanks. Uh, Mary, questions or comments?
Uh, nothing to add. I'm, uh, very excited about this, Rick. It is, um, it is bittersweet. You've been such a wonderful, uh, partner to, to the board and, and just, your contributions are so significant and appreciate that you have, um, you know, been thoughtful about a succession plan and we look forward to the same great partnership with Erin.
Uh, I echo everything Mary just said. You know, you've been a delight to work with. Um, you have provided meaningful and important information to the town at a timely basis, on a timely basis. And, um, you know, I think the, the care with which, um, you developed, I think, your department, um, so that we have, um, just an exceptional candidate to consider this evening. Um, I, I appreciate all the work that you've put in, um, to, you know, leaving that department in, in, in great shape. And I wish you all the best in your retirement. Uh, questions or comments from the public with respect to the appointment of Erin Walsh as the Director of Assessing in Hangum? Seeing none, I would accept a motion.
See, before we do the motion, I don't see in the proposed motion an effective date.
Uh, July 1st.
Okay.
Yep, you're right, didn't make the motion. Sorry about that.
So with that, I move to approve the Town Administrator's appointment of Erin Walsh as Hangum's Director of Assessing pursuant to chapter 263 of the Acts of 2016, an act relative to the Town Administrator in the Town of Hangum. Such appointment to be effective July 1st, 2020.
Second.
All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Erin?
Aye.
Great, all right. Well, welcome aboard, Erin.
Thank you, Rick.
Okay, um, next up is the COVID-19 update.
Sure, it's gonna tab over to the right document. Hold on a second. There's a lot of documents yet tonight.
Yeah, this was, this was like a whole time meeting, right?
Sure was.
We're not having another meeting soon, are we?
When aren't we nowadays? Okay, um, I'll try to read through this quick. I think there's a lot of very important information. A lot has happened in the last week, so, um, I'll try to get. So I'll try to get through this efficiently. So COVID-19 cases, as we mentioned last week, the DPH recently began reporting both confirmed and probable COVID-19 cases and deaths in Massachusetts. As of today, they are reporting a hundred and three thousand, eight hundred and eighty-nine cases in Massachusetts, of which eight thousand, four hundred and four are in Plymouth County. As of last Wednesday, they were reporting two hundred and fifty-seven COVID-19 cases in the Town of Hingham. The number of hospitalized COVID-19 patients, the percentage of people testing positive for COVID-19 and the number of COVID-19 deaths across the state continue to decline at this time, which is great news. Regarding Phase Two, the reopening, that's been the, the, the point of discussion in large part on, for tonight's meeting. Governor Baker announced over the weekend that Massachusetts moved to Phase Two of the reopening plan effective yesterday, June eighth. Phase Two will roll out according to a two-step schedule. Under Phase Two, step one, the following enterprises may open their brick and mortar premises to employees, customers and the public with restrictions. Retail stores, including stores and enclosed shopping malls. Restaurants, outdoor table service only. Hotels, motels, inns and other short-term lodging, but no events, functions or meetings. Limited organized youth and adult amateur sports activities and programs. No contact games or scrimmages and indoor facilities limited to youth programs. Professional sports practice and training programs. No, no inter-team games and no public admission. Personal services involving no, no close personal contacts such as photography, window washes, individual tutoring, home cleaning, et cetera. Non-athletic constructional classes and arts education, life skills for youths under eighteen years, years old in groups of fewer than ten. Driving schools and flight schools. Outdoor historical spaces, but no functions, gatherings or guided tours. Funeral homes in increased capacity to, to permit forty percent occupancy for one service at a time within the facility. Warehouses and distribution centers. Golf facilities, including outdoor driving ranges. Other outdoor recreational facilities, including pools, playgrounds, spray decks, mini golf, go-cats, batting cages, climbing walls and ropes courses. Post-secondary higher ed, vo, vo-tech, trade, occupational schools for the limited purpose of permitting students to complete a degree program or, or prerequisite for employment. Day camps, including sports and arts camps and public libraries. If public health data reflects continued positive progress, the Governor will announce step two of Phase Two through a subsequent order. Step two will include the following with restrictions. Indoor table service at restaurants and close-contact personal services such as nail care services, massage therapy, personal training services and tattoo and piercing, tattoo piercing and body art services. Our Restaurant Reopening Working Group, consisting of staff from Health Building, Land Use Development, Police and Fire Departments, along with Town Council, will continue to work with Hingham Food Establishments to help them navigate the new Phase Two requirements and work through the process of this board that this board reviewed tonight to consider requests to add or expand outdoor seating. We are committed to working with and supporting our local businesses during this transition while ensuring public health and safety standards are met. As new opportunities to get out of your house emerge, please continue to frequently wash your hands, practice social distancing and cover your face when you can't maintain six feet of distance from others in public. Regarding Town Meeting. Preparations continue for Annual Town Meeting on Saturday, June twentieth at two PM. Gates will open at twelve thirty PM at the Hingham High School Multipurpose Field. As we've stated earlier, we are committed to running this event as safely and efficiently as possible. The check-in process will be contact-free. Attendees will be seated ten feet apart and hand sanitizer will be available throughout the venue. A few people have expressed concern about the heat. While we don't yet know what the forecast will be for that day, we are urging attendees to prepare for town meeting like they would for any other outdoor event in June. Please wear light, comfortable clothing and bring hats, sunglasses, sunscreen, personal umbrellas for shade and a water bottle. We will set up a cooling station with misters near the restrooms and will have water stations throughout the venue. We are also in the process of securing some tents to cover a section of seating at the back of the field to provide additional shade and protection from the heat. Please note that heels are not allowed on the turf field because they can damage it. We recommend wearing closed-toed shoes as the surface can get quite hot. Michelle, do you want to update us on town programs?
All right, thank you. Some updates from our Recreation Department. So per the state's move to the phase, to Phase Two yesterday, playgrounds, basketball courts and street hockey courts in Hingham will reopen this week. The high school's multipurpose secured facility, which includes the turf field, is available by permit only at this time. Please take precautions when using, when using Hingham's outdoor recreation and playground facilities. Face coverings or masks must be worn by individuals when they cannot maintain six feet of distance from others. After visiting playgrounds and public spaces, users should wash their hands or use hand sanitizer. Last Wednesday, our Rec Commission and Rec Department made the very difficult decision to cancel their summer camps and instead proceed with smaller-scale programs this summer. They issued the following statement. With much consideration, the Recreation Commission has voted to cancel our preschool, playground, teen extreme and country club sports camps. Hingham Recreation Summer Camp is one of the largest municipal summer camps on the South Shore, enrolling three thousand children and employing a hundred high school and college-age young adults. These programs are part of the fabric that tie our Hingham community together. The decision to cancel camp was not easy. The Hingham Rec Commission's most important priority is the safety of Hingham's children and employees. Although the state is allowing camps to operate under the Phase Two guidelines, it is not feasible for our program to meet each safety protocol. We are immediately turning our attention to offering shorter and smaller programs for summer twenty twenty, which we believe are better suited to meet all of the state's safety guidelines. We plan on offering a variety of programs, including sports, dance, art and many more. Stay tuned as we will be rolling out many of these popular programs in the very near future. And I know that Mark Thorell and his team are hard at work on that right now. From our Elder Services Department, the following updates. Elder Services continues to offer fitness and social programs through Zoom, cable TV and YouTube. In addition to the eleven programs they are currently offering, the department introduced a ladies' coffee hour on Friday mornings at ten thirty AM. This is an open program, providing a platform for social interaction. Classes, however, require registration by calling the Senior Center at seven eight one, seven four one, one four five eight. Staff are screening messages and returning calls on a rotating schedule. Elder Services sent out a pre-recorded phone message last Friday to four thousand, seven hundred and thirty-two members with information about town meeting, the town election and Senior Center updates. Elder Services continues to make referrals for services to local organizations for assistance with essential shopping, face masks and other needs. The Outreach Coordinator is working with a volunteer to send out newsletters and welcome letters to residents who turn sixty during the last three months with information on available department services. The department coordinates limited medical transportation for seniors provided on a case-by-case basis with an emphasis on urgent medical care needs. The Senior Center also continues to host a Meals on Wheels program, delivering up to forty-five prepared meals to seniors in Hingham daily. Thank you.
Thanks, Michelle. Any questions or comments for my colleagues with respect to the COVID update?
No, just thanking staff for all their hard work.
Thanks, Joe. Mary?
No, no questions.
Okay, questions from the public with respect to the COVID update? Okay, Susan Sardi still on the line? I don't see her.
Oh, I think she's dropped off here.
Okay, I just didn't know whether she might have anything she might want to add. Okay, next up on the agenda is public comment for items not on the agenda this evening. Does anyone from the public have a question or comment that they'd like to make at this time? I'm not seeing any. Okay, appointments, do we have any appointments tonight?
Not tonight.
Okay. Selectmen and Town Administrator reports. Michelle?
Nothing further, thank you.
Tom?
I have two very brief things. I just wanted to report out that as an update to the financial plan adopted by the Selectmen, the Advisory Committee and the School Committee several weeks ago, we have completed our initial Tier One action plan. This plan identifies an initial savings of approximately four hundred thousand dollars. These savings come from projected savings between salary and capital cuts or, or cost savings, not through cuts but through attrition and, and delays. The plan is subject to change, but it was requested as part of the, of the agreed plan that we report that out when we had it. And the other item I just wanted to announce was that we have posted for the Water Superintendent position. The posting is public and it's on our website and it's scheduled to close on, on Monday, June twenty-second.
Excellent. Excellent. Joe?
Nothing further this evening, thank you.
Mary?
Nothing further.
I just have a couple of things. Joe kind of alluded to this, but we, we have a busier-than-expected June with a bunch of meetings coming up that I want to make you aware of tomorrow night at six PM. We are going to have a roundtable discussion with the three Selectmen, the Chair of the Advisory Committee, Victor Baltara, and the Vice Chair, Bob Curly, to talk about the town's financial management plan going into town meeting. I think the idea is to make sure that people understand the financial controls that will be put in place, as Tom, Tom alluded to earlier, in, in judiciously stewarding town meetings appropriation to the town. And we'll, we'll be joined by our Advisory Committee colleagues to discuss our financial policy and certain of the warrant articles that are on the warrant that this year that would ask to utilize fund balance for funding. So that you don't want to miss it, people. Six PM tomorrow night. And, and, right, my colleagues, I don't, I hadn't heard any objections. We're going to actually be video that one, so we'll, we'll get to see each other. It's going to be a big night. It's not quite a drive-in, but it's going to be. And then next Thursday, June eighteenth at seven PM, we have posted a meeting to consider an option that's been provided to us by the legislature to potentially reduce the required quorum for town meeting. So Hingham has a funky kind of quorum setup. I have to confess, I was partly responsible for this. Where on the first night of town meeting, we require three hundred citizens be present before the, before the meeting can open and business be conducted. And on any subsequent night, we require two hundred, hundred citizens to be present. And so the question is, do we reduce the quorum because of the pandemic and the difficulty we may anticipate in obtaining three hundred citizens being present? Do we consider reducing the quorum for town meeting? So if you'd like to listen in on that discussion, that's going to be next Thursday, the eighteenth at seven PM. I think you should have received your warrant in the mail today. Is that right, everybody? Is that right?
That's my belief.
With the beautiful purple cover. I like the choice. It's always a, I think it's a really exciting day when it, it arrives in the mail. And as we talked about before, it, it's, it's a lot of work that comes together by committees, commissions, staff people, all of the relevant boards to put the business of the town before you. So, you know, please, the Advisory Committee takes a great deal of time and care in crafting their comments so that you're fully informed about, you know, what you're voting on. So I commend that to your reading. And then last but not least, as is the tradition, there's a pre-meeting to town meeting. This year will be held by Zoom on Sunday, the fourteenth at two PM. And that meeting will be convened by our, our moderator, Michael Puzo. So this is a really, really busy period in the town's calendar and a really important period for the citizens to engage. And, you know, I encourage your participation at these meetings. And to the extent you're able, you know, we would really love, love it if you can make an effort to show up on June twentieth for town meeting. And as Tom said, I think we're trying to anticipate weather and heat and, you know, accommodations for folks that may need a little help to their seat and the like. And that's taken a great deal of time and effort and energy by the same people that talked to you tonight about restaurant reopenings and the like. They've been employed kind of across the town in, in conducting the business of the town and to prepare you, the legislature, for conducting the business of the town. So with that, I would accept a motion to adjourn.
To move.
Second.
All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Karen, aye.